All right, welcome everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order on this Monday sunny sweltering evening. Let's establish that we have a quorum being with a rule called vote. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
John?
I'm here.
Meredith?
Here.
I'm here as well, we do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
And, Corby, I appreciate that you will help us ground our work tonight to help ensure we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students. We do begin each board meeting by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chum Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Corby, thanks for being willing to put voice to those today.
Absolutely. In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals on the basis of their identities face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting the systems of inequity. Our Ho-Chum Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chum Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thank you, Corby. Moving on to the agenda, are there any questions or comments about the remainder of the agenda? I think I would like to just elevate, and I think we do this often, but just looking at where we have superintendent's report and what works into board action, I'm wondering how you all feel about taking our board action and approval of our OE and results policies in concert with when those get presented. Any opposition to that suggestion? Okay, so we'll plan to just kind of dance back and forth a few times through board action and superintendent's report. Any other questions or comments or suggestions about the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda then as adapted?
So.
Thanks, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda with the adoption, with the modifications, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Tonight's agenda has been adopted. So our student recognition is to highlight our graduation ceremony from just over a week ago. So it's okay, I'd like to just start first by thanking all of the amazing folks and team that put the day together. From the perspective of a board member, it seemed seamless and flawless and easy minus just, you know, having to wait for parking, as we had so many people in attendance, which was really exciting. So huge gratitude and congratulations to our graduates. It was a really lovely time. Chad, anything you want to elevate as well?
Well said, we had just about 450 students participate in graduation and had kind of a great capstone or endstone to their career. More than anything, this was a sign of community partnership by the fact that Epic opened the doors behind the scenes, literally dozens of staff members helping us with tech and all logistics to pull that large community event off at this space. So we're incredibly grateful to Epic and certainly congratulations to all of our graduates. Yeah, it was great, great event.
I'm grateful for the weather, for raining while we were in the ceremony. That was amazing.
So part of the seamless piece where we were having to make a game time decision for the throwing.
Yes.
And ended up having to...
It worked out.
Yeah, punt on that because of the rain, but it all, it all worked out. It was great, it was a great event.
And you guys made it within 75 minutes that you set out to make it.
One, Harless, we will have more efficiencies built into that for next year. But yeah, for kind of the first time back in four years, it was super successful.
And not to say that rushing, right, is the goal, but just sort of really out of the fact that most people there are there to celebrate one person out of the 450, so just out of perspective.
Efficiencies.
Yeah, and they want to see that celebration, they don't want to listen to 17 of us speak. So that certainly is something I value that our district is elevating is the graduates themselves.
For sure, but Ted, Ted, to be able to have your high school career in this facility and finish it at Epic, I'd put that experience up against anybody's on the nation. Pretty fortunate students and community to have those facilities.
Yeah, thanks. Moving on to our superintendent's report, and thank you Chad for filling in to take care of this partnership in our meeting this evening.
Absolutely, happy to be here. I actually have a couple of agenda items I am connected to tonight, and then a couple others that our academic service team will hop up and do. We're going to bring Janine up, who is going to assist me in what should be a good feeling, good news update for the board regarding our facility usage. I think actually kind of a good segue, seeing that I already mentioned our high school as far as being an amazing community asset. So we do have Janine here. I'm going to kind of go through the outcomes and then we're going to get a full intro from Janine and learn a little bit more about her work. So we thought the timing of an update like this was, was good, kind of midsummer, we've wrapped up another school year here, I think finally have our, our facilities team and our student body and our community really getting accustomed to utilizing the spaces that we have here in the school district. And Janine is the perfect person to kind of walk us through a behind the scenes in terms of everything that goes into making these spaces available for everyone outside of school hours. So you get to meet the whole facilities rental team today. We're going to review usage at the high school, I think the board and the community will be interested in that, and how that compares to pre-construction. And then we do have some pricing update recommendations as far as rental rates. We've been, you know, essentially sitting on rental rates related to our new facilities for the last five years. We also have some recommendations that we're going to bring forward to the board for feedback regarding meal prices as well, which have also been sitting kind of stagnant in a high inflationary environment. So with that, I'm actually going to turn this over to Janine. Who is, I had to arm bar Janine and just sharing the picture of her hugging a cone at, that might have been girls on the run, I don't know if there was. She agreed, we had to sign some copyright waivers. So Janine, welcome. Give us a full introduction, let us know the full name of your position with the school district, and then walk us through a day in the life of all the moving pieces behind the scenes to make these spaces available. Good to have you here.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Janine Ennis, thank you for having me and listening to my spiel today. So I'm the Facility and Events Scheduling Coordinator for the district, so I manage all of the buildings and all of the facility uses within each building and also outside each building with all the outdoor facilities that we have. So to kind of give you a, I guess, job description of what I do kind of in the day, my day. So I obviously thankfully have a software system that I use for scheduling. So on any typical day, I'm doing scheduling for all the requests that are coming in, and that can vary. I mean, some days I get five to 10, some days I get upwards of 50, it just kind of depends on what's going on, what time of year. You know, the school district, like inner requests, you know, they ebb and flow based on the school year, and then community does as well. Our community usage goes up when our school usage goes down, because obviously there's more facilities available, when our own, you know, athletic teams and clubs and everything aren't quite as active. So, and then with all of those reservations comes the logistics. How do they get building access? Liability waivers if they're not part of the ASD, Certificates of Insurance, and then creating safety protocols for weather, which we just kind of reviewed here now with the summer coming up and fun Wisconsin weather, you know, severe weather and tornadoes, and making sure our community groups and our own the ASD groups are safe when they're in our buildings. I work very closely, as Chad said, I'm a department of one, so I work very closely with our custodial teams, they're kind of my right and left hands. I can't be everywhere at once, so I rely really heavily on them. I can't speak highly enough of all of our custodians at all of our schools and how, and their willingness to just do whatever I ask of them, they're just amazing people to work with. And then again, more logistics, wayfinding, traffic, foot traffic, how people are getting around, especially in this building, when we might have a huge state, you know, aquatics meet going on, and then also a basketball tournament. And like how that works with parking and signage and, you know, all of that. So, and then lastly, I do all the financials as well for the community piece that are actually paying to use our facilities. So I'm invoicing, I'm processing payments, I'm working with our accounting team, stuff like that. So I really love what I do because every day is different, and I could be putting out orange cones like you've seen the picture, or I could be, you know, making signs or just working one-on-one with community members or our own staff on their conferences and different things. So it's really great with the variety, which is what I love the most.
I asked Janine to put together just a few slides summarizing the types of events we've been hosting, and also had her do a little data snapshot in terms of where we were and kind of how the year is wrapping up now, and a couple other interesting tidbits that the board and the community might be interested in.
Yeah, so when we look at activities or facility usage in our district, there's kind of two groups, right? There is our ASD, which is our own staff and students, whether it be, you know, athletic teams or our academic clubs or special school events like back to school night or roller skating night at the elementary school, you know, there's a gamut of different activities. So I'm helping all of them, you know, make sure that they have priority in our spaces over community use. We get them, those scheduled very early, even before the school year starts, to make sure that they have the spaces they need and when. And then the other side of that is the community use. So whatever we have left available, that then opens up to our community users, and they're able to request space through me. And again, that can be anything from athletics, student groups that aren't necessarily the ASD, so like our Girl Scout Clubs and Boy Scout Clubs, things like that. We are starting to host a lot of religious or cultural events in this area that do performances and dinners, up to 600 person dinners, things like that in our atrium. And then birthday parties, my favorite.
And so birthday parties at the pool.
Yeah. Well, and other people have rented out just a gymnasium to do a birthday party and pizza in the cafeteria, so that can vary as well. And then special events, like most of you are probably aware, the Chamber does some events in our schools, like the reindeer event in December, and our foundation does craft there, so different things like that as far as community use goes. So just to give you a brief overview of how someone goes about requesting space, and this kind of again goes for both our own staff or community, so they have a request form that they fill out and that comes directly to me, and obviously the first thing I do is, is the space available that they're requesting. So I kind of go through what's going on in the building at that time, is that space available, do we have the staffing to cover it? And then once that's complete, you know, I give them a confirmation, and then that goes into all the liability fund paperwork that we go through, and them signing a contract that they agree to pay the amount that I have quoted them. And then again, going into logistics, how are they going to get access? Who's going to be here to cover the event? What type of things do they need from us? Tables, chairs, black linens on tables, you know, anything like that. And then it comes to event day, and that's where it's kind of all hands on deck. If it's a bigger event, you know, I'm there, I can be. Again, this is where I rely very heavily on the custodial teams, especially if we have events in different buildings on the same day. And then again, going into the invoicing and settling payment for the...
Oh, I like the fun fact.
The fun fact. So when I actually was doing the reporting for, you know, revenues and all of that, I didn't even realize that we're managing over 10,000 events a year.
Wow.
In our buildings. So, and again, that's anything from a meeting to a big event, but just like the facility usage is, is pretty incredible.
Yeah, 10,000 a year, that is sometimes.
Yeah, so with that, when I kind of looked at what spaces are actually used in the district, we obviously have hundreds if not thousands of classrooms, which aren't used so heavily as like, you know, the high school field house and Sugar Creek's gymnasium and cafeteria and different things. So I kind of broke that down and averaged, we average about 100 spaces that are used on a regular basis in all of our school buildings. And with that, I added up, we almost hit like 30,000 hours of facility use. And again, that is both the ASD and community after-school hours and on weekends. So if we break out communities specifically, about 40% of that is community use. And then I went through all the people that I work with, I probably average around 170 different community groups within Verona, Madison area, and some even regional and national now that we're starting to get in as well that want to use our facilities.
All individual needs and individual requests, and yeah, everyone has their own story.
Yep. And some are repeat now too, which is kind of nice that they've, we're in a good location being here in Verona, and then also our facilities that we're starting to get, you know, Girls on the Run and different state aquatics meets that are starting to come back, which is actually a little bit easier on staff, because everyone knows what to expect, rather than starting something from scratch every time.
We did highlight that, and you guys have had a chance to meet that, Ozikam, our aquatic centers open $71 a week, which is unbelievable, between the staffing necessary to keep that facility up and running, and all the behind the scenes work to make sure that that pool is available is pretty incredible.
So when we look at facility rental, again, this is everything combined, we're upwards of $265,000 a year. 105 of that is just coming from aquatics, and 33,000 of that is coming just from our performing arts centers, and those continue to increase. You can see that everything is on the upswing right now. And I was just curious what it looked like before we had the new high school. And we were upwards, just over 100,000 in revenue. So just since in the last four or five years of having this new facility, you know, we're up over 100% in revenue. And then just to give you an idea, again, I can't stress enough how valuable our custodial team is, they're, they have helped cover over 800 hours of event time, that we're just paying them time and a half, and again, the client covers.
Outside of the revenue.
Yeah, that they're helping with event coverage.
They were there at graduation.
Yes, they were, whole crew.
Can I just pause really quick at that last slide, just to maybe, I see the word revenue, so just, I hope it's fair to say this is not profit that the district is gaining, right? You're highlighting all the staff hours to run all these events that we're not looking to make money off of our facilities usage, but this is that, which I know is coming later, but the fact that, right, we're charging things because we have the flights on and do all the things to run the facilities, so just making sure we are talking revenue, not profit.
Correct.
100%, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, none of the expenses have been taken out.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, Jen. As we close things up, here are just a few highlights of large events that our entire team, you know, spearheaded by, by Janine, we've had just over the last year or so. The Girls on the Run event alone, I had a chance to go to the Chamber last week, they highlighted that in terms of the large number of people that, that event alone brought into our community. So, you know, not only do these, this partnership with the community, you know, it has an impact on the, the people who are local and get to use it, but it is truly a partnership with all of our business owners, that this is also kind of a nexus of bringing people into the Verona area community to not only use our facilities, but lots of other spaces in Verona. With that being said, and this is, I think is incredibly noteworthy, I know there can be situations where the Chamber or the rec department can have a contentious relationship with the school district in terms of access to facilities, and it is quite the opposite, and Janine owns 95% of the credit there. The Chamber recently nominated Janine, and I want to make sure I get this right, for the Destination Madison Award Behind the Scenes Service Award. Out of 20 nominees, Janine is a finalist of 1 of 4, and we'll find out at the Big Summer Summit, June 27th, if she's the award winner, which was cool. So Allison, who runs all of the community coordination for the Chamber, nominated Janine, we all pitched in to help with some of the texts, and it's, we're wishing her the best and certainly super worthy nomination, so can't thank Janine enough.
Congratulations.
Do we have other questions regarding community usage of facilities?
More of a comment. I just want to thank Janine for putting up with my fraternity brothers as we schedule the day that we're here, that we had lots of moving parts, we were communicating with our international headquarters quite a bit about necessities, and Janine, I felt so bad, I was sending her emails every other day because headquarters would email me, "Did you check on this? Do you have security? Do you have this? Do they have that?" And so I just wanted to thank you, because when we got here, everything was laid out for us. The biggest surprise was the signage in front, we didn't even think of that. And when we get here and you had signs up, "Please park Omega Psychotic Park in this area," it was just, it went off with a bang, so we will definitely be bothering you again next year.
Yeah, there's a reciprocal feedback loop there, right? But Corby, you need to know that Janine has a very funny sarcastic sense of humor, so if she gets to know you well enough and you're bugging her, she'll like it. Right now, you're, you're still in her good graces.
Anything else from the board?
Just the same, I appreciate, I know that we, we work with you through my husband's business, and he has just glowing things to say about, and I think just the fact that that's such a positive base to the community, I appreciate the work that you do, because this is a huge lift. I mean, this is just demonstrably huge, and you're doing a fantastic job, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Janine, we're going to keep you up here just in case the board might have a question about rental rates.
Yeah.
And then, thanks again, thanks for the presentation, and obviously all of your work. So on the board, we, I typed a couple of memos up that we included in board docs for the board to review, because there's a lot of detail in there, and wanted to just give the board an update on essentially the recommendations that my team is making to Dr. Clarity, where these, where our rental rates will eventually essentially land in admin rules regarding the rates that will both be charged for meals and we charge to rent our facilities. And we did, I think, a modest tweak on a couple of things maybe a year ago that were just real minor things, and made the determination to kind of bring things forward prior to July 1st, to more than anything, right-size what we're charging in terms of our county peers, and can, kind of to Jen's point, none of this is for the school district really to profit at all. Most of what we're recommending is for us to recoup costs, continue to make sure John Bremer's budget is appropriately funded on an annual basis, and make sure that we have revenues as far as staffing to support all of the usage. So I did type all of this up in a detailed memo. We wanted to make sure that the board knew, in the world of facilities, we break that down into a number of categories or tiers, where a resident nonprofit gets a different price that they would pay to rent our facilities than someone who's from out of town and maybe teaching a training triathletes in a for-profit business. And I hope that makes sense to everyone. And we went through and really did a whole bunch of research that we actually detailed in that memo as far as where we felt our school district should land. It was not our goal to ever be the highest in the county, it was more than anything to make sure that we kind of kept up with the market in terms of what was fair to charge for the usage of facilities, and I'll, we'll certainly answer any questions the board might have around that. Janine and I have done some like work in terms of meeting with, with groups we knew that would be impacted by these changes the most, and we had those meetings over the last few weeks, and for the most part, all the organizations and folks that would be impacted by this understood, were appreciative of the quality of our facilities, and really kind of understood that we were going to bring these recommendations forward. And then I'll touch briefly, and then certainly here to answer questions regarding that memo, we, we've got essentially, we have comparisons and, and recommendations related to the PAC, the Aquatic Center, and just general facilities, and there were a few of them we teased out. And then lastly, I bring forward some very modest changes to what we charge for paying families regarding the cost of meals. This last year, we, we had a net loss in Fund 50 of about $55,000 as far as operating food service, which runs their own budget, and we haven't touched those prices since 2017. And I think everyone at the table here understands the cost of going to the grocery store has gone up exponentially since 2017. The same is true for everything we're buying essentially in bulk to make meals for all of our students, and had some recommended changes that we'd like to see move forward post-July 1st. With that being said, we can certainly reference that memo if you'd like, or if the board has general comments or questions on a few rate changes, we are here to answer questions.
And just as a note, board, this is not something you see on our agenda, we don't take action on this, this is not anything that needs board approval, but just wanting to share for transparency for the board, the community about just the behind the scenes and all of that data. If you've not had a chance to dig into it, there's just, there's been so much work done by you and your team, thank you for all of that, for just finding the comparisons and taking the time to really be thoughtful about the data analysis, there's a lot of good stuff there.
Absolutely. Other questions on any of that? I will take the lack of questions, the fact that we are on the right track with what we proposed, and we're in a good spot.
I think my only question is just communications to families around the nutrition costs. You know, the other, right, you just talked about talking with key players in terms of facility usages, but just what those next steps might be in terms of communication with them.
Yeah, though, they are modest in terms of what the, the small increases that our families will see. We will, we have an August 5th All Admin Institute, we actually met, Marcy and I met today with it, with our whole team regarding support for back-to-school communication. That will be a piece of what we would include in the principal newsletters, and I think we would lead with the text that it's our goal to continue to make these meals as affordable and accessible for every family in our school district, and that the modest rate changes are in line with that, we're still below the county average in almost all of the categories. With that being said, you know, I think at least in year one of the modest changes, Fund 50 might actually see a surplus, we might end up profiting slightly as costs catch up with us, but I actually think that provides us an opportunity related to our wellness work, where one-time equipment purchases, or potentially even an additional staff member to help with a service line that we haven't had before, would be available where it wouldn't have been available in the past if we didn't make those changes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Janine, thanks again, you're awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your nomination.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Pete?
Pete?
All right, well, I'll get rolling as we bring Pete forward. I think this can be a relatively brief update, a reminder to the board, every one of our budget updates really from now until we get all the way through handing off the draft budget book to you, is really a pulse check or a temperature check to make sure the board is comfortable with the direction our annual budget's taking for next year. And we have a few other added pieces of information we're going to share with all of you this evening, just to make sure we're on the right track for what will end up in that annual meeting book and then eventually be passed at the annual meeting. So Pete and I wanted to just go through... So Pete and I wanted to just go through, get us closer to reaching closure with the 23-24 budget. We have an update on projected fund balance for the board tonight, and the key budget moves as a reminder in terms of how far we came with all the moving pieces of the 23-24 budget. And then we've got an updated model for 24-25, and starting to hone in on what our targeted levy and mill rate will likely be. So a reminder, we just benchmarked and highlighted a few key dates coming up. The board will get, on August 14th, will get the updated budget book, and then we work our way through the preliminary budget all the way through October where we go and have the budget finally passed at the end of October when we finally know the key lies property value and how we ended up on Third Friday come. So the board is in that for. A reminder, and this is a new slide for us, we had a lot of moving pieces with this 23-24 budget. Broke some type of record with the budget amendments, but all good work for the most part. So we had a number of one-time curricular purchases. We bought Lacy Road, that seemed like a decade ago, but it was this fiscal year. We worked through a strategy with the board on Fund 10, Fund 39 debt defeesance. We gave the board an update on an OPEB deposit to stretch out our benefits package for staff members. We closed out a high school construction project. We didn't borrow any cash, and we're going to end up with a budget surplus. All good news in terms of all the moving pieces that happened in 23-24. I continue to ask Pete to get closer and closer to where we're going to land the plane here on July 1st. There's still lots of moving pieces regarding outstanding bills, another payroll, but we're starting to hone in on where we think the year-end budget will end up, and this continues to kind of be an annual, I think, benchmark for us. If we end up at 1% to 2.5% budget surplus, that's about the right spot for us to be. We never want to come to the board and say we're running out of money and we'll overspend the budget that all of you passed to start the year. And I also don't think we want to end up with 5% on the table, meaning we held it back and it couldn't end up in the classrooms. So Pete, it looks like we are projecting between our remaining surplus and where we'll end up with all the pieces related to kind of projected unspent resources, around $2 million?
Yep, somewhere right around that ballpark.
So the two key lines on that, kind of on that chart, the $1.4 million budget surplus, that's really the money left over from the referendum. That's Fund 10, that we made the decision not to defuse debt this year. And then where we'll end up with essentially unspent budgeted money would be between $500,000 and $1 million. All right, a quick 24-25 budget update. This is the big slide that we want feedback from the board on if you don't think we're heading in the right direction. So the budget Pete and I are putting together for the budget book, at this point, we believe in leveraging the school levy tax credit and net new construction. If we use those two pieces as kind of our lever for where we end up with the levy, we believe we can pass a levy and associated mill rate that existing property owners would not see an increase on their tax bill. Mr. Parkol.
I just want to interject now before we get to the question. Are you hypothesizing, like, is this to do with their actual taxes, or are you talking about the mill rate? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Like, the actual assessments are out of our control.
They are.
So I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing here.
Yeah. So, and we'll have a slide that will detail this in a little bit. So Pete and I are recommending to the board this year, and we did the same thing last year, and John, you had a very pertinent question, that we raise the levy in line with net new construction, new properties being brought onto the tax base, and the increase in the school levy credit. That dollar amount would be spread around all of the existing property, which would mean, on average, the average existing property owner would not pay a higher dollar amount in taxes. But to your point, you may have winners and losers there, where someone's fair market value went up more than the average property tax owner and someone else's did not. So it is very conceivable, and this even happened last year, that you'll have existing property taxpayers that have a lower tax bill. If this budget all ends up working out by the time we get to August, you'll have someone that stays the same, and you'll have others that go up because their assessed value went up at a higher ratio than the average property taxpayer.
Can I just comment on that too? Because I think this gets at John's point, and correct me if I say any of this wrong, Jen, but we essentially get data from the municipalities that make up our district that says, okay, in the tax year, our assessed property values went up by 14% or whatever, and we know that X% of that is new construction. Within that municipality, there are different homes. Some of them went up by 10%, some of them might have gone up by 18%. So all we can deal with, because to John's point, we don't control what their assessed value is, all we do is react to the average data that the municipalities give us, so we're doing the best that we can to keep those, so that on average, that perfectly middle-of-the-road homeowner, that their tax bill stays neutral or as close to neutral as we can. But we can't control all the levers.
That is, that's correct. There is actually an additional complicating variable that's on, and we'll do this again when we go through tax season with the board and the community. The municipalities do assessments, and they reassess every so often. Fitchburg is actually being reassessed this year, and they are reporting, Pete and I are in constant contact with them, they're reporting the assessed value, the municipal assessed value could go up by 18% this year. That should not shock anyone in Fitchburg because there is the secondary, more important in our world, fair market value, and the Department of Revenue sets that. And essentially, that number comes from if the municipalities have under-assessed the values of properties in a municipality. They look at sales in terms of houses worth $300,000 sold for $375. The next house was $400,000, sold for $500. The Department of Revenue looks at that, and then they actually apply an equation to the assessed value, either increasing it or decreasing it to make sure everyone pays kind of a fair rate, and that municipalities cannot undervalue homes and folks not pay their fair share when it comes to school taxes.
It's equalized.
So, yeah, so it's the equalized or fair market, I think it says fair market on your tax bill. So that's an added complicating factor, but at the end of the day, what we can control is the levy. What we will know is net new construction and how much is in the school levy credit, and if we don't increase our levy over the amount in those two buckets, we're spreading the same amount of tax burden over the existing property tax owners, payers, and that's really our goal with this budget right now. We're fortunate to be in that position. The city of Verona alone is projecting 5% net new construction on a couple of billion dollars in property value, which is a very big number. Anything over statewide, they're usually happy 1% to 3%. And the city of Verona alone is projecting 5%. So that's an advantage to the school board and to the district to be able to bring new property taxpayers onto our tax base. All of that making sense?
Yeah.
All right. A reminder that we had staff compensation in line with CPI. We're continuing to track what we do with debt, and we'll show you that in the five-year model. And this year, we had very limited staffing increase to kind of prepare for the next two-year budget. The board's seen this a number of times, that's that balancing act between what we're ringing in and what we kind of owe or have in terms of obligations. These budget goals are in line with the conversation we just had. Prioritize tax impact, be purposeful with capital planning, debt management, adjust the mill rate in line with what we're talking about with the levy, and leverage net new construction, anything we've got going on with aid, and what we have going on with property values.
I think that's another important point to talk about too, because we kind of brushed aside it a little bit, but we, again, correct me if I missed stating, we have the authority to have a much higher mill rate than we do, not for the operating fund, but for, we could go even more aggressively in, you know, prepayment on debt than we already do. But the reason we don't do that is because it's like a specific priority of our board to try and minimize that tax impact on our residents. So we could have a mill rate considerably higher than we do, but we don't want to have that kind of significant impact. Is that right, Jen?
Yeah, that is 100% correct, and we will finish up with the historic last 10-year mill rate slide. And prior to a very high inflationary environment, it was common for school boards to really have conversations around mill rate, and that you didn't want to yo-yo on mill rate, and as long as everyone kept paying the same ratio on $1,000 of property value, then really what was happening would be your taxes would go up or down in accordance with what was happening with the value of your property. That conversation essentially went out the door four or five years ago when property values had been going through the roof. And that's where we have now encouraged the board not only take a look at mill rate, but also make sure we keep an eye on levy and taxing burden. And we've continued to make the budget move, Joe, that you are right. We could have kept it at $1,250 for the last five years. We haven't done that. And the board actually has the ability to say, "Chad and Pete, we're not comfortable with this budget. We don't want to prepay on any capital debt." And you haven't done that either. We've saved $7 million in interest over the last five years for capital debt, and when, not if, when we have to go to taxpayers for additional money and permission regarding a capital referendum, we're providing a soft landing for that. So all of those things are true. All right, the board has seen the assumptions that we're putting into the next budget. I can go through that relatively quickly as we highlight the five-year model that the school board is incredibly familiar with. A couple of things just to keep an eye on there. The fiscal year 24-25 budget, we have $800,000 remaining of that $19 million operating referendum, and that will likely be chewed up when we do next year's budget, 25-26. And we are projecting that that will happen. We'll have a tougher budget next year, and we knew that was coming. We don't know what's going to happen with the state quite yet, but we have a balanced, in fact, surplus budget for this upcoming year we'll be presenting to the board. You can also see in there the Fund 39 levy. That's halfway down in the 25 column where it says $15 million and change. Our minimum debt on all the capital stuff we have is about $10 million. So we're able to keep the levy in a spot that has a neutral tax impact for existing property owners, leverage new property owners, and prepay $5 million in capital debt next year, which gives us lots of flexibility when we have to go back to capital referendum again, and continues to prepay on essentially interest savings related to Fund 39. That is a look at where we are tracking with the mill rate. Pete, you want to give us a quick summary? I know we've got a long meeting ahead of us. Give us a quick summary of what we're thinking for calculations related to the school levy tax credits.
Sure, Jen, thanks. Jen already touched on this time too, the school levy credit. I'm just going to talk briefly about that. Jen actually went into a lot more detail last October when the levy was being set. Our next slide is going to show a nice breakout of the levy as Jen had mentioned. Some of the things I want to point out, this is just a quick review, is it is a tool that's used to provide property tax relief to taxpayers in Wisconsin, and it's distributed based off the municipality's share of the statewide levy. Now, I didn't say the school district's share, I said the municipality's share. That's where this gets a little bit more complicated. There's a statewide master spreadsheet that tells us, hey, what's Verona area school districts' share on this, and what is Oshkosh's amount on this. But we wouldn't know the city of Oshkosh, and we also know the city of Verona and the city of Fitchburg and such. So a colleague of mine, Andy Wieland in Oregon, he's the one who brought this to our attention, and he started tinkering within, and then he asked if I could help him out, and we ended up doing some statewide webinars on the school levy credit and how it's affecting the school districts. So a couple of things I want to point out from the slide is the very top section, we want to point out that the increase of the school levy credits this year exceeds the increase in the equalization aid appropriation this year. So when they set up the biennial budget, they set it up for the fact that the school levy credit was going to exceed the amount that's going to the equalization aid part. And secondly, if you look at the little table down there, I put what our estimate was for last year. Like I said, there isn't really a number up there, but I can get it with a degree of certainty, knowing that we were about $14.3 million last year, and I think also the degree of certainty will be at about $15.3 million next year, which would be about a $1 million increase in our school levy credit that's going to go as a levy credit to a lot of our taxpayers.
Thanks, Pete.
So can you just explain a little bit more about what the tax credit is? It's the taxpayers that see a reduction in their taxes, the credit on their taxes that's under this line item of school levy tax credit?
Exactly, exactly. That will come through as a reduction in the amount of school levy. Because if we were to levy a certain dollar amount, then municipalities are reducing it by whatever that share of the credit is going to be. So the taxpayer, when they see it, they see the net amount.
Right. So essentially, we hand off our levy amount to the municipalities. They have a number of deductions, one of which is spreading $15 million out amongst all of our taxpayers. So that money that went up about $1 million for next year before they send out the tax bill in terms of what they actually need for the school district portion. John, this gets back to your original question regarding the tax impact. This is the levy related to mill rate. So my crystal ball would tell us we are conservative on equalized property value, that by the time we get back to the board in October, if our goal continues to be leverage net new construction, leverage the school levy credit, keep taxes flat in a high inflationary environment because we have those assets working for our budget, if equalized property value is higher than we predicted, that mill rate will go down because our levy will stay the same. We'll just have more tax base to spread it out on, and I would predict we would actually end up below $10.99 for our mill rate once we get to October. But we're conservative in nature right now. So the, and then we'll wrap up and certainly answer any questions if the board has any. Here's a five-year or a 10-year historic look at where we have ended up with mill rate, and you can see we've continued to keep that in check and tick that down as we brought on new tax base and property values have gone up. Any closing comments or questions, just to make sure Pete and I are on the right track as we put that budget book together? Chad?
First, I just, I love how thorough you guys are, and I'd love to see that the mill rates getting down and staying reasonable. I just want to make sure that I understand something. So the, and I heard you go through this quickly, and I just didn't quite latch on, so I'll make sure I've got this. So in the last state budget, they increased the school levy tax credits, which is a credit that goes through the municipality to the taxpayers based on the amount of tax base. There it is. Is that how it's based?
Municipal spending.
I mean, it's based on municipal?
Municipal budgets.
The school levy credit is based off of how much school levies flow through each municipality. So it's basically, we look at the statewide tax levy amounts, and we can, I assign it to a municipality for each one of these, to each one of these districts to know what the proportion was going to be at each municipality that way. So it's complicated.
It sounds complicated, but just basically then, it seems like the school districts that, not school districts necessarily, but the municipalities that spend more get more of that.
It's actually the school districts that spend more.
So the school districts that spend more... So the school districts that spend more get more of that tax credit. And then the equalization aid is where school districts that have a lower tax base get credit redistributed.
Yeah. I think it's actually the, it's the opposite of the equalization aid formula. So districts that have a lot of property value and spend a lot per student get less state aid. The school levy credit is distributed in terms of how much school districts are spending on their levy. So it's the opposite in terms of how they dole out the money. And we get deep into this, the school levy credit piece, John. The other piece that is at least worthy of mentioning, we only have the flexibility in our school district to leverage the school levy credit in terms of modeling how taxes will go, because we have capital debt on the books. If we were a debt-free school district that was bound by the state revenue limit, there's only so much we can levy. And then the school levy credit would indeed be lapping off property taxes that we wouldn't have any control over. We have the ability to manage our levy a little bit, because we have capital debt, and we passed the operating referendum. So we could manage tax bills a little bit more than some school districts that are debt-free and can really only levy in line with the per-people revenue limit. This, that's deep. That's like school finance 103.
So all I heard was, one, robs the rich to give to the poor, and the other one robs the poor to give to the rich?
Yeah, that's kind of right.
Well, yeah, the levy, the school levy credit just meant to lower the tax burden of the high burden districts.
That, that was the intent at the state capitol. And if we had a community that included a community of school board members that were only worried about keeping taxes as low as possible, that would be put to use. But I believe the six of you are in a spot that we know, we could actually lever it, we could levy $5 million less related to Fund 39 next year, which would lower the tax burden for all of our community members. We'd be foregoing interest savings on capital debt, and we would be building up to a high-stakes capital referendum with a large tax increase that won't exist in this community. When we go to taxpayers to build an elementary school, Pete and I actually believe we will be able to do it mill rate neutral, because of net new construction and us kind of managing that levy in a responsible way, instead of saying, we need a, we need a dollar on every $1,000 in property value to build this school, then it's high stakes and we have yo-yoing taxes, which is not the case here.
Yeah, so you're being strategic with the mill rate, because we have debt, we can choose to prepay faster or a little bit slower, but definitely not fall behind schedule.
Angle.
Yeah.
So as we've kind of looked at these mill rates, you know, for the past few years, and I haven't been on the board for all of these, but for some of them, or a chunk of them. And I appreciate the, the care in bringing the mill rate down, especially in the environment that we're in, with, you know, property values really soaring, and just that really hits our community hard, seeing. But I also appreciate that we've been able to be flexible and utilize the, the atmosphere around us financially to leverage in a way that makes the most sense. I mean, we've really paid off a lot of debt with the higher mill rates that we have. Now that it's more of an impact on our community, with the mill rates reducing, that makes sense. Do we have a lot of callable debt? And we've been very aggressive on debt prepayment.
Well, part of the reason we are in the world of de peseance is we have no callable debt left. So we're, we'll carry it all the way through, I think, past 2026 at this point.
So that's what I, I think I want to make sure, that, that's great. I mean, and that I think is also important, though, for anyone who's saying, no, we want to prepay debt, or, you know, our community's listening, prepay debt more heavily. We can't. I mean, we've done that, you know, we've really hammered that as quickly and as hard early on, and now we're reaping the benefits of, you know, really great planning that you're doing right now to help see us into the next phase. Thank you. That's.
It is, it's reciprocal. Thanks to the, certainly to the board for kind of sticking with us on this vision. And I think just messaging to the community around, I mean, I think we should, we do have to own the fact that we are sitting in a $150 million high school that the community agreed to pay for. Even Janine's presentation tonight, I think, kind of merges into that idea. And that our mill rate is higher than average in Dane County. At the same time, we're in a kind of return on your investment mode, and we have to be responsible with that money, prepay debt to save on interest, and not have high-stakes yo-yoing capital referendums down the road.
Thank you. I know we've asked a lot to balance all of those, that marble, you know, lever thing. But we truly have asked you to balance so many competing interests, and the fact that there's been a path forward that really does achieve that balance is really appreciated. And not easily, and I think we're in a situation that is enviable for our school districts. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Other questions, comments?
We are one step closer to a draft budget book. We'll continue to keep the board in the loop as we make progress. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Pete.
I believe we got Dr. Hawkins up next.
Thanks, Pete.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you. So tonight, myself and Adams and John, the incoming director of people services, we're going to give you all an update about the work of the human growth and development. Recently, at our April 15 meeting, we presented information to you all about the state statute. And since you all as a board own this process, we want to provide a recommendation to you all tonight on what your possible next steps could perhaps should be as we work to align ourselves with the state statute. So just as a review, under Wisconsin state statute, the development and review of a human growth and development curriculum requires the assistance of an ad hoc advisory committee. So we're going to talk specifically about the process to develop that ad hoc advisory committee, along with sharing with you other documents that we created as a recommendation tool tonight. We'll also talk about the makeup of the committee, as well as the next steps. So when we think about the ad hoc advisory committee, based on the April 15 meeting, the recommendation, or the directive from you all would be that this committee would help to review the current curriculum and then make further recommendations to you all. And so some considerations that we want you all to consider as you all think about the makeup of this ad hoc advisory committee is the number of participants. So we're recommending 15. And then we've created some recommendations as we think about possible participants. One of the things that we heard loud and clear from you all is that we want to make sure that we lift up voices of those that are traditionally marginalized or formerly marginalized, and we also want to make sure that we center it in the equity framework. So when we think about some of the considerations for participants for the ad hoc committee, we want to make sure that applicants have demonstrated deference to having medically accurate information. So we want to make sure that, or our recommendation to you all is that the team has individuals that are grounded in medical knowledge. Have applicants demonstrated the knowledge of human growth and development content areas. Does the applicant pool represent participants in demographic representation of the VASD community? And what experiences with similar committees, groups, or organizations? So what would happen is participants, or potential participants, would fill out an interest form. That interest form was shared with you all earlier in the end-of-the-week email, as well as board docs. So the recommendation would be that the interest form would be shared with our community using social media. I apologize, I'm getting ahead of myself and not flipping through the slides, but that the interest form would be circulated using social media. When we think about the ad hoc advisory team, as I stated, 15, and so we want to make sure we align ourselves to the state statutes and the one-fifth, two-thirds, the breakdown that they give us. So that would include students, clergy, parents, teachers, school administrators, and health professionals. We do want to point out, though, that if the board deemed it necessary and you wanted additional applicants, we certainly could make those accommodations and allowances for the parent group. And again, that aligns with state statute. So then, secondly, in addition to the ad hoc advisory team, we'd also like to recommend that we have an internal team. And so the internal team would be as directed by the ad hoc external advisory team. And this internal team would be internal to our district, and it would be made up of nurses, pupil services staff, grade-level teachers, as well as students. Because what we want to do is, this internal team is closest to the point of instruction. So they could then provide information to the ad hoc advisory team. So again, this internal team, though, only operates to provide information to the ad hoc advisory team. Mr. Zengzhan, how about that other thing as it relates to that? So when we think about, just as a recommendation for our ad hoc advisory team, we wanted to just provide a recommendation for the cadence and the structure. So I've spoken to the structure. We would recommend bi-monthly meetings starting in October, which would allow us then some runway to put out the participant form, the interest form, to then review those, and/or depending on how you all determine how participants are selected, we would then be able to have our first monthly meeting, bi-monthly meeting in October, with them alternating October, December, February, April, and June. We would provide updates to the board as we meet. And then, as the ad hoc advisory team determines necessary, we would then call upon the internal team to provide information. Again, the interest form is linked here, ways that we would garner participants, and these are just a few ways. This is not all-inclusive. Email, website, social media, posting in public places, the Verona Press, we might go to sign out. However, whatever it takes, personal phone calls to garner a good candidate pool for you all to review. And so I'll pause, because there are some questions for consideration. You all own this process. And so when we think about the information that we share, some things that we need you all to consider is, how would you all like for us to select? Or how would you all like to select participants? And then, in what venue or form would you all like for us to communicate information? Is it, if there was a recommendation for us to review candidates? Is it, I guess we need more direction from you all based on the information that we provided for you all tonight? So I'll pause for questions and discussion.
Well, I can give at least my thoughts on the last part that you asked about, about kind of process for selection. I think that given the wording of the state statute, I think ultimately the board should approve, like give a stamp to the final slate of candidates. But I don't personally want to be involved at all in selecting individual members of the committee and saying, I think, I think you're good on the committee and not you. Like, I don't, I don't want to personally have any role in that. I trust the district to go through a thorough process that selects candidates based on the criteria that we've discussed, and then the administration can make a recommended, a recommended slate of candidates to the board for us to kind of consider approving. That, that would be how I would do it.
Thank you, Joe. Any thoughts after Joe's comment?
I agree. I mean, I've been different to whether or not, like, I don't mind participating in the process of selecting, but I don't think that's appropriate for us right now. I think that having admin go through all this criteria, figure out what's, you know, legally required, taking the applicants, do all that legwork, and then recommend a slate of candidates to us that we can then approve through the process makes a lot of sense logistically.
I would agree on the recommendation process. I think that, that is probably the most logical and reasonable place. I do think as a board, I think we do have to have the ownership of it because of the statute. I think in the recommendation part, I think we would want to know how this slate fits with the characteristics that we've outlined. I think that's a responsibility that we would have to ensure that our recommendations are enacted. So that keeps the nexus closer to us having the ownership that I think is spelled out in the statute. I think one thing I would want to know, just so we have the awareness, is the breakdown of the different groups in the slate. I'm a little leery about having dual, dual categories shifting into the parent category as a default. So that's one thing that I'm, I'm a little leery about. I want to make sure that there's, that, I think, especially when they go into the spouse of, of staff members, like, there's trying to be a distinction, and I want to make sure we're, we're good on that. But I, I'm curious how other districts do this, because it feels, it feels oddly burdensome in a weird, in a weird way. I mean, I think it's very important that we do it. I, I don't think that having the advisory committee is a undue burden. I mean, I think it's an important topic that should have, you know, as much feedback as possible. It's this weird ownership of the board for a...
Curriculum.
For curriculum, yeah. Thank you, John. It is. Which is where I do think leaning on the recommendations makes the most sense. I just want to also make sure that we're not running afoul of the intent of the statute.
And I just want to elevate in this space. I think one of the reasons I know I'm comfortable giving you all the directive to help assist with this committee creation is because of the already-built reputation of this team in terms of how you've already done this work. So not only through strategic framework, committee work, but parent advisories, student advisories, I mean, all the ways in which this administrative team has been so thoughtful about selection across other spaces. That is the reason I'm confident to be able to say this to you. I could maybe see scenarios where other boards would not have that same level of trust, perhaps, or confidence in the process, but that is certainly why I feel, even though this is owned by the board, that this is something we can have deference to you all and your expertise in doing this work, because it's done, it's been done so thoughtfully multiple times. And the knowledge you all have with all the facets of the community, I think, just speaks to our trust in you all to, to bring information to us.
So part of the work that we did prior to this, kind of the background work, we met with several districts to dig into and learn how they, what about this process, and what we have found, and I think that is fairly safe to say, is that we saw a continuum of how much board oversight some districts had. Some were relatively loose, and others were relatively tight. Even as far as the number of participants and how the board chose or opted to not choose participants so that they could perhaps take a path of, let's say, least resistance. But, I mean, there was one district that opened it up and they took every applicant. So their committee was larger than 15. And so they accepted every applicant.
I have a question about that, because that seems a little uncool. So when you have such a, there's such a strict number and such a strict breakdown, is there a point where, if, let's say, let's say it was a 40-person committee, but only 10 people show up? Because, you know, the bigger the committee, the smaller the return on attendance is. It just, you know, is that, is that problematic, I would think?
Well, I will say TPI has given, you know, some, some, some guidelines on, you know, the size. And one of the things that we did learn is the larger the size, the harder it is to manage. They also speak to having facilitators. They also speak to having facilitators. So one of the things that I did not mention, and that the facilitation process would include facilitators, and so the facilitators would be specific to our directors, to our academic services team, as well as other people that are appointed to serve as facilitators. And so the facilitator would serve on both the internal team, so that they are able to garner information and then provide facilitation. But they spoke specifically about having strong facilitation structures, as well as the size of the team. The larger the team, the harder it is to come to consensus, to make decisions. So they do give some guidelines. And again, every district has done it differently. However, I think we have to do what's best for Verona in the Verona way, and specific to what President Murphy said, you know, we've done, we've, we've demonstrated that we will beat the highways and the hedges to find participants, because we value the voice of our community. We value the voice of our families, our students, our community members. So if that is you all's recommendation, as we continue to move through this process, we will share information with you all via the bi-weekly email, as well as providing updates to you all in this forum.
I have one last question, just as we go. Just, I know this has just been something that I think has been a topic in other districts. And so I just want to make sure that we have all of the, you know, possibilities that we've hashed out. Do we have a way to ensure that we're getting representatives from different sites? I saw one of the possible recommendations was having, like, the PTO, like, have somebody from, you know, bring, bring somebody into the committee so that can be reported out at each site. Is that, how do we ensure that we're getting site representation and different age representation? And I keep clicking on the link, and I can't get past the second page because I haven't filled it out. So I don't know. This may be a question that page two would resolve all of the mysteries of that.
So we do ask what site. So then we are able to make some decisions so that we ensure that we have representation.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'm only half filled out.
So you're going to be asking questions for emails. Test@gmail, you'll be able to advance past that first one.
Thanks, yeah. You're like, why is Meredith representing? She sent twelve of these.
Just submit to me.
As if that would help, you know, me navigate. So I just have my error in doing this, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And then, no, go ahead, Joe.
I, I just have a couple of questions about some of the selection criteria. One of them talks about experience with similar committees, groups, or organizations. I'm just curious what a similar committee group or organization would be, because this seems to me to be kind of unique. And I'm, so I'm just curious how, what we consider to be a similar committee.
So the point of this question is to really garner, like, their experience. It could be religious community, committee, committees, it could be committees PTO or other committees that they've served on in the community. So again, it's another way for us to look over the experiences of all of the participants and then use that as another data point when we're looking at participants without looking at other identifying, other identifiers.
That makes sense. To, to me, what kind of, just the concern that popped up in my head when I read that is if we're kind of talking about prioritizing applicants who've already served on other advisory committees, suddenly you're creating this echo chamber that maybe doesn't include those marginalized voices that we're talking about. But it doesn't sound like that's what, that's how it's being considered at all, so that's good. Second question was, it looks like there's a, there's going to be inclusion of students?
Yes.
Is, are there age considerations or, you know, what? Just tell me a little bit more about what's intended or thought of in terms of student participation.
Based on the recommendation, again, from the board, we know our secondary students have a lot to say. So we would definitely tailor and look at how we take in their input, but we certainly realize that it's important. So again, some of that is based on the direction that you all provide for us.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to include that voice. I was just curious as to kind of what that would look like.
Thank you for taking this off our shoulders to do this selected.
I, I know we're, we're committed to two things: being lawful and staying aligned with state statute, and two-way communication with the board.
Yeah.
You all own this at the end of the day, and I think that our second update kind of proves that. And we'll just continue to provide progress updates either in bi-weekly emails, or I would guess we'd be back in front of the full board in open session. And all of these meetings are open. So this is an incredibly open process, but board-driven with kind of marching orders at this point, which is perfect.
Which might speak to the size of the committee, too. If these are subject to all the meeting rules, aren't they subject to quorum requirements? Are they not?
If there is any chance we would have a forum attend, we would notice it.
Of, of quorum, yes. I meant a forum of the committee. So like, if you have forty members in the committee and only ten show up, can you have an open meeting?
I don't, I think, I don't know.
You can't make a decision.
You just can't take action.
Can't take action.
Yeah. You could have a meeting, but you can't, you can't.
And that's not the purpose of the committee, anyway. So we would only be advising and coming up with recommendations to present to you all. So when we spoke to other districts, one of the things that they did, they met with whomever showed up that was a part of the committee. However, they shared all the notes and information with every person who was considered a member of the team, of the committee. And so that way, information was always shared. But again, we're only an advisory committee, so you don't have to worry about decisions coming from us, other than recommendations.
With a smaller group, it's an open meeting. People can still have the ability to hear the information. I mean, there's still a public comment part that is on. I think there has to be a public comment.
I was going to ask you about that.
I think that's a component of it. So people can give input, it's just the advising part really comes to, from a group. But voices can come in. So that benefits to the smaller size.
So I guess the question would be, will you all, the recommendation of fifteen, the recommendations that we provided tonight, will you...
Agree.
Smoke a cigarette?
Right. Agree.
You're on the right track.
I think you're on the right track. As long as it meets legal requirement, I'm more concerned about the ability of each member to contribute than, like, fifteen, sixteen, forty, you know. I just want to echo again what Meredith said, because I think she hit the nail on the head, where, you know, state law is asking us to do something that is outside of our kind of local culture of doing. We do not do operational decisions at the board level, because that is not what we think is in the best interest of educating our students. This state law asks us to do some of that. So I think it's entirely appropriate for you guys to go and do all this. I don't want to constrain really how you do it, other than some of the basic guidelines you set forth. So, yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, it's because of the, it is, it's contrary to how we govern, but at the end of the day, I think the selected group would come back to the board for approval.
Yeah.
And Meredith would be the explanation of how this group fits a criteria, but I do think people have to approve it.
Yes.
Should get to have all the fun. I'm so sorry, but thank you. Thank you.
All right, then, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, board, for your questions, clarifications. Thank you, again, to your team for following the directive of the board on creating this team.
All right. Well, we will move on then to OE eleven. This information was shared with you all. I am proud to say that OE eleven is the operating expectations around instructional programs. And what this states is that the superintendent shall maintain a program of instruction that offers challenging and relevant opportunities for all students to achieve the outcomes defined in the board's results policies. And because we were compliant in all areas, and we didn't want to be redundant and go over this information, however, we do want to highlight one of particular interests, and that is OE eleven five. And what that states is that the superintendent will encourage new and innovative programs and regularly evaluate and modify all instructional programs as necessary to assure their continuing effectiveness. And so indicator one speaks specifically about all proposals for new and innovative programs will include an evaluation process aligned to the results policies. And so last year was the first year of our STEM Academy, and so we were able to send ten students to Madison College. This year, we've completed our second round, so we'll be sending another ten students. But the data that we are sharing with you all speaks specifically to, can you...
Quick.
Well, the context, it kind of shares that we entered into partnership, and then a selection process was initiated. And then, one of the data points is, as of this May, all ten students have successfully completed their first year in the early STEM Academy and will remain with the program for a hundred percent participation, for retention rate. And I will tell you, the team here at Verona, we were very intentional to maintain a relationship with the students. We met with them mid-year to learn about their experiences, to, to, to see, you know, what are we missing, what do we need to do? We were also very intentional to provide transportation and opportunities for students to stay connected to their home school. They are still Verona area high school students. And so opportunities to participate in sports, choir, attend the prom, we made sure that they were well informed, so that these were opportunities that they get participated. So the hyperlink just provides some data points for your review. So that being said, there are no questions that I have for you all of them OE eleven. It is now in the hand of the board to do what you all do to...
First, to ask any questions. Any questions that, I mean, board members have, while we have Dr. Hawkins here to help support anything we might want to know.
I don't have any questions, but I want to endorse this presentation style of, like, we all received the report and had the opportunity to review it. When there's nothing that jumps out, it's discussion-worthy, so I'm fully in.
And, and same with access to the community, right? These are all in board docs, so this is not anything that, you know, we're not forthcoming and sharing. And just to that point of, you know, now that we're kind of in this process, that much of this is, I don't want to say repetitious in a bad way, right? But we've seen the indicators, so the evidence is elevated for this year in time. I really appreciate the executive summary also, so I think that's a really key place, even if we're talking about community members looking at these reports, just the highlighted pieces that really speak to kind of leadership moves that have happened around this particular school year. That's all really helpful, I think, as a, as a board member to just get that high-level review and then the detailed evidence to follow. Any other questions about OE eleven from the board? So then, per our earlier discussion with the agenda, we'll kind of dabble then into board action. So members of the board have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE eleven. So I'll now accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented, so that we can begin formal board discussion and to decide whether we are agreeing with compliance. So is there a motion to accept OE eleven as presented?
So moving.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Corby. Any further discussion in terms of the superintendent's and team's recommendation on being in compliance with OE eleven? Okay, so after that discussion of this report, I'll reiterate that there is a motion and a second to approve, to approve the report as presented. All those in favor of approving OE eleven as presented signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? OE eleven has been approved. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins.
Thanks, Dr. Hawkins.
Turn it over to the rest of the team.
So now we'll dance back into superintendent's report, moving to R dot two dot two dot two, World Languages Monitoring Report.
There's the math there.
I know. And really, truthfully, I, I don't have the Rs memorized. Can I confess that here? Okay, still learning.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to be here this evening. But the difference in OE eleven, where we were compliant in every area, we do have some nuances to the data with world language tonight. So we will go through each of the indicators. Well, notice, one of the indicators is based on course enrollment, which is one of the data points that we'll talk about in our next agenda item, with the strengths and limitations of using course enrollment. So invite us just to know that that is coming. But the other exciting piece about this presentation for me is knowing that we were here a few months ago sharing out the SEAL by literacy and some of the leadership actions that we were taking to increase access to the SEAL by literacy, and we're seeing some emerging promising results already. So it always feels good when we can share our plan, execute our, begin to execute the plan, and then start to see some emerging results for students. So with that, I will hand it over to Rosa Maria Larson, who operates over her top level programs, to share where we're at.
So the purpose of the policy is listed here, and this evening we'll be focusing on the literacy and personalized goals in the area of world languages. And this is a reminder of interpretation. I wanted to highlight the second paragraph, that so the students are prepared to compete in a global economy by teaching on the second language and developing culture. And it also talks about developing culture, connections, comparisons, and community, all which come through with online education. And a reminder of the definition of terms that we use in this results policy in general. And the American enrollment in world language courses were only recorded on the high school as we did last year. And stamp results are reported elementary through high school because our kiddos who are in two-way immersion in the international school all took the same high school. Okay, so this indicator is about world language participation, and we color-coded it based on the results, based on our feedback about statistically significant changes. And as Amy already mentioned, that we will be looking at enrollment metrics and limitations to those. Just to interject about the color codes, so if it was a five percent increase, we went with green. If it was a five percent, more than a five percent decrease, we went red. Anything in between, if it was a marginal increase, everything that didn't meet that five percent threshold is marked yellow. So that's where you see likely a lot more yellow, but that's in alignment with how we approached the last few results policies, to make sure that we're thinking about statistical So when the number of students in a focus group is fewer than ten, then we mark it as a star, and we do not report it. However, when we look at the number of students in focus groups increasing, those we did report. And we had an increase in the number of Hispanic students who are taking world language, but a drop in the percentage. And looking further at this data, a significant portion of the increase of students who are identified as Hispanic, many were newcomers, and they opted to take ESL courses and COTN courses to meet their long-term needs and goal, graduation goals, and instead of world language courses. And we had a decrease in the number and percentage of Asian students taking world language courses. It's also likely that they are taking other options at the high school. Also, we had an increase in the number of students in several focus groups who are taking advanced world language courses. The percentage of students taking advanced world language courses did not change, or they slightly decreased, just because of the increase in population overall. As one leadership move, as we continue to enroll to the immersion into the high school, we continue to partner with students and families to ask them and to have that open communication of what kind of courses they would like to see in the, in the school to support their language proficiency, development. Here's a reminder that students who take the stamp test are all third, fifth, eighth graders in two-way immersion, as well as students that go to Verona area international school, and then any high schooler who's taking the SEAL by literacy, who are, who's pursuing that. The stamp test itself doesn't have a benchmark, per se, but we're using the requirements that the state of Wisconsin has put forward for meeting the proficiency level for the SEAL letters, which is a level six or intermediate high. So we had an increase of seventy-nine students who took the stamp test this year, and an increase in the percentage of students who met that benchmark of intermediate high or level six. And of the sixty-eight students who met this benchmark, the vast majority of the students were at the high school, which... the high school, which is what we would expect. We did have high levels of proficiency at the elementary and middle school, but at the high school is where the students are reaching these high levels. The vast majority, the 341 students who took the test, were elementary and middle. And even as we have an overall increase in the number and percentage of students meeting the benchmark on the stamp test in general, when we break it down by focus groups, we did not have a significant change in the percentage of students who met the benchmark. So this year, our Seal of By Literacy advisor made a conservative effort to make personal connections. She has, she's quoted in saying that, you know, tapping into the structure actually does help increase the participation in this process. And because Verona area school district also adopted the new state requirements, and it has made the Seal of By Literacy more accessible to more students. And here's some information about students in different focus groups who have earned the seal or are pursuing it. And two focus groups had more than 10 students, and we reported on these numbers. Okay, and here are all the beautiful faces of all the scholars that have earned this seal award. So you can see, we're excited about the increase in the number of students who are taking the stamp test, as well as the number of students who are participating in the Seal of By Literacy process. And as some leadership moves that we've made to, in our world language program is, this year with our role-like time, thank you, that's very important, we've had our middle school help our world language teachers work together with our high school world language teachers. So there's more coherence, especially at level one, and also so the teachers know where the students are coming from, where they're going, and working together that way, as well as the strategic recruitment of students to participate in the Seal of By Literacy process. And as another move for next school year, we are offering Spanish language arts up from the high schools. That will be for students who are in tween, as well as our students who are heritage speakers of Spanish. That is across the community schools. And we have merged our heritage Spanish classes at the high school to go into the Spanish literature and language classes with these students as well. Are there any questions?
More of a comment. So this past weekend, I was talking with a parent who's gonna have a, a child new to the district, starting kindergarten. And the first thing they, they complimented the district on is its emphasis on being multilingual. The district that they were formerly in, which I won't mention, they said did not have that emphasis. And they, as a parent, were trying to put down their, their child themselves, like you have to do this, but having the support backing of a school district is gonna help them out immensely. And they, they really were pleasantly surprised, happy, and appreciative of the district's efforts to push more multilingual.
Great, thank you for sharing that feedback. I think we're excited, right, with the number of students earning the seal quadrupling, right, this year, from last year to this year, and really from the feedback we got from the board and the presentation we gave, making a video, making a screen cast, really celebrating and thinking about how do we continue to uplift tribalism within our, within our district. So very excited to hear that the kid or family would.
Yes, and when I was sharing with them the number of languages, they couldn't believe it.
To add to Corby's point, and I won't belabor this because we've been over it 1,000 times, and it's, I think, what our next discussion is going to be, but this just goes to show exactly kind of how data used incorrectly can tell the wrong story. Because if you look just at the report based on the data we're presenting, it looks like we're not making progress just because of how we define progress, when in reality, we have a phenomenal world language program. This is an area we're doing extremely well in, in my opinion, and the, the data just doesn't tell that story, just because of how we've chosen to use the data.
I'd like to tend to tag onto that, because I think that's what's confusing for me when I'm looking at indicator one, especially, and I don't know where we're at. That, I feel like I'm actually not getting a great handle on our, our data. Maybe, I'm definitely not the data person, but just for example, like, it would be helpful for me to know the overall percentage of our student body in both advanced or world language classes, and then between that, like, which percentage, I mean, if I'm thinking of a, you know, a graph, what's the number? Because I think, as you said, I mean, if they're moving into the advanced classes, that shouldn't, that's excellent. But it shouldn't detract from the overall number. I think I'm, I'm curious about seeing like the composite, like, those two combined with a, a light blue and a dark blue or something, just.
Some different colors.
I don't know. I mean, just, I'm, I'm struggling to figure out, it looks like there's an increase in enrollment overall.
Right. Right. Well, no, and it's like, right, numerators and denominators are increasing, and so like, even just to dig into one of those, was gonna be my question, actually, just to pick one yellow and just give quick, like, what is the anecdotal story of, yes, there's an increase in both numerator and denominator? So increase in numerator, so there's more students accessing, but just that, I think, is a helpful context even in general, that we're not comparing the same groups really, but we're kind of breaking this down to percentage. So I think there was a question, and did you kind of get what I'm asking?
Yeah. And, and really, we report out when we give you the numerator and denominator, the results policy only asks us to give you the percentage.
Right, right.
We're trying to help you to understand the bigger picture. So if you look at slide, the slide of R 2.2.1, indicator one, which I think is.
58.
Yes, slide 58. Right, you see, for all students, we do have a slight decrease in the number of students on that first line taking world language, and we have an increase of the school population. So therefore, you see the decrease in percentage. Now, it's approximately like about 30-ish students here, so not major shifts that make us think that there's something wrong with our world language program, that we're not recruiting those students. I think it's likely the competition we're seeing between departments, right? Two of them went to music, three of them went to art, four of them went to CGE.
Which are in other result policies, and so we have this little tug of war going on.
So that's a great factor else. I think we should emphasize here. You know, whereas if we look at advanced courses, the next row, you do see the number of students, your numerator, that took advanced courses did increase by, you know, over 30, as well as the school population also increased, so there, we're seeing the percentage increase. And so I think this comes back to what Joe was also mentioning, what is the value of the course enrollment? What is it actually telling us? Because when you get to indicators two and three, we're seeing, what's our goal in students taking the course? To be proficient in the language. And our stamp results are increasing, and our students earning the Seal of By Literacy are also increasing. It's just the course enrollment along the way that's, that's within these indicators, so we're gonna report as is, what I think is worth the larger conversation we're leaning into, about what is the actual course enrollment telling us about student experience, and how do we think about whether that's a positive or a negative, right? Perhaps these 30 students, maybe 10 of them were at the STEM Academy, right? And aren't even in our building. I mean, they're enrolled, and they'll, they're in that 1825, but they're not here to take world language at high school, but they may be accessing that at Madison College or elsewhere.
I think that's, as you're tapping into that, I think, you know, to see, we're seeing that over the last two school years, there's approximately 81 to 82% of our student body are enrolled in some sort of world language program, whether the regular or the advanced. I think that's a great piece of information to have. We saw that suddenly start to drop off, that would be where questions were raised. Within that number, that overall number, seeing that we have kids that are moving into the advanced classes, I mean, I think that's an interesting, an interesting story that can feed into the Seal of By Literacy. I think that really speaks to kids going deep into the work, and that's what we want to make sure that they're having the ability to pursue. I do like seeing just the overall percentage of enrollment, just as a, as a general trend. Yeah, I don't think we'll ever get 100% of our kids pursuing the foreign language, speaking from a parent who had a child who was not a foreign language person, but it would be interesting to know if suddenly it did plummet, is there a scheduling conflict? So that's the type of information that I think would be helpful, but seeing the difference in just the percentage of advanced classes versus not advanced classes, I'm not sure that that tells me the story without a bigger, the bigger context of overall percentage. Does that make sense to you?
It does.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I think what you're about to say is more important.
It's very. I just want to follow up on one of Meredith's points. I, I think that we, because I also think it would be interesting for me to know, and information I would like to know, as to what's happening with enrollment. But I think there's a difference in what information I think would be useful for me to have and how we're defining success in the OE. Like, are we really saying that you successfully achieved the OE if enrollment goes up? Because then we're still pulling against those other OEs that are saying the same thing, and students only have so many elective courses, and we have amazing elective offerings, particularly at the high school, that like, I, I think if there's a way for us to parse out from information that we still want to receive, but maybe that we're not tying the district's success on an operational expectation, what that data says.
And these are results, Joe, just to clarify what we're talking about, yeah, the competing results policies.
I have a, I have a question, because for me, it's, what students select world language but then decide to keep, stay on the path for progress? So, so an important data point for me to demonstrate that our world language is staying strong and improving is that not only tracking the student who actually selects world language, and then tracking if they chose to continue taking it or not. And I don't, I don't know how you do that, but for me, that'd be interesting, because obviously, they took it, they had their experience, absolutely had buy-in or continue doing this. So you would show, okay, that's our world language program, obviously, is strong, but it's lacking some of that engagement.
That could still elevate competing factors, right?
Like, there's still competing factors, so how do you take out the competing course load and then normalize that data so we're actually looking at it apples to apples? Because right now, it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, agree.
It's a bunch of like, gosh, you're slowly jerking it out.
Actually, I agree, and I think there's something, though, about the competing factors that I struggle with a little bit too, knowing that we do have RP and really, we have a lot of open time. I mean, we, I'm just wondering, are we incentivizing stretching? I, it's just a question I have, or is the bigger question than in world language, putting it out there?
Incentivizing stretching.
Yeah, are we, you know, we can.
So do you know that the high school is working on tightening up our processes for the, for the RP, for the responsibility passes and the release periods, and being really clear with students on what are the criteria with which we'll have a release period, right? How is that attached to a job? How is that attached to a class elsewhere to really make sure that we have really tight systems for our students and the time that they're at the high school as well as elsewhere?
I know, I kind of threw that little at you. That wasn't my intention.
We're gonna be at 95 before we know it.
Right, right. Yeah, I see. Sorry, that, just, that's one of the things I'm thinking about, and I don't need any help now.
Agreed. And I think what you're getting at perhaps, Meredith, is that the idea of, if they're in, if we can guarantee that they're here, we feel good about any of the actions that they might be taking for an elective, whether it's world language or art or music. I think what you're getting at is having to mitigate for students who may have in the past accessed a different system to be elsewhere. And how do you make sense of that?
That's exactly it. I appreciate you putting it like that.
Awesome. John, thank you.
So this is great conversation, and I imagine we're about to continue it into our next line item, so I want to put that out there and say, like, this report looks all good to me, so I'm happy to move on with it. I think some of the similar questions that I would have here about whether or not these indicators are relevant to what I want to see are gonna come up in that next conversation. Speaking of the points that we've brought up, I'm much more interested in the, like, the Seal of By Literacy numbers increasing, because one of the problems I see is when you look at the total enrollment, which seems like a good baseline indicator, is if we then ask the question, well, how many of our students consider themselves to be on like a college track where they have to get two years of foreign language to, you know, qualify, whatever it is for more advanced schools or whatever that is? It's easy to look at these enrollment numbers and say, great, but really, most of these kids are just playing a game. They're getting their two years in and they're out. They're not necessarily, I mean, I'm not gonna read into it, but like, you know, like, we can't assume that we're doing a good job of encouraging, like, lifelong language study based on that numbers. And, and we can't control it if all of a sudden the world becomes more xenophobic and these numbers go down. So what I'm interested in, like, what I'm gonna say, like, how many students are continuing on, but continuing on to a degree beyond what they feel like they need to meet some other substantial goal? That's why I like the Seal of By Literacy stuff, because it is really going above and beyond. And then the other question I was gonna ask when we stare off was, how can we get at a measure that says, you know, these students are rolling, but then they're actually getting some level of proficiency, right? Because the joke when you get to my age is, like, I took two years of German in high school, couple of years of Japanese in college, couple of years of Arabic in graduate school. I speak none of it, right? It's useful to me because I have much better English now, but, but like, but you know, that's kind of the common refrain. And when we talk about how useful this is for students, it's the opposite of that, right? Like, that they start something that they follow through and become, you know, hopefully fluent in someday. So how do we really get at that? With that being said, I would be happy to take up less of your time, move that part of the discussion over to the next agenda item, discuss this report as it stands, and then move on.
Yes.
I just want to say, maybe I want to comment for any comment, because the Seal of By Literacy, I feel like a lot of people think it's just one language, but it's offered across many languages. How many languages is the seal?
We.
Or how many different languages were achieved with the Seal of By Literacy?
Our students.
Our students. That's a great thing to put out in the public. So I remember being shocked.
I have to check the, the languages, but there were several of them, including ESL.
That's the piece, exactly.
So I remember, we had a presentation on this, I think, September 4.
Sorry, let me get through it. You didn't know this is.
I'm not gonna answer it for him, but I remember being shocked at like the number of languages from the students that earned the seal, because it's not just when they're not just taking Spanish classes or like native Spanish speakers. They're like, like, some of them are native everything speakers, you know, coming from like African languages, other European languages. It was amazing to see how many. It was like, not a number that I would have sit, like, thought, because it was like, I think, bigger than 10, smaller than 100, the number of different languages. It was outstanding. I was like.
And those are some of the really interesting stories to tell, right?
Well, it was, it was interesting, because the Seal of By Literacy gives us a way to actually put tangible value on the things we talk about, like valuing other cultures, valuing other languages when they're coming here, and they're struggling so hard to learn English and to like, you know, fit in and be successful in our education system. Like, to be able to put value on what they already bring to the table is such a phenomenal thing, and that's what's happening. Like, there are some kids that were earning the Seal of By Literacy in languages that like, we don't necessarily offer in school.
We found the information.
Oh, yeah. See, I was just finding your time.
Phil, buzz, Phil, buzz.
Spanish, Arabic, French, American Sign Language, Bengali, Russian, and Mandarin. And the students' home language, when we do the home language survey, we have over 52 languages in our school district.
Wow.
And how those languages keep getting elevated. I mean, I think, a segue I'm thinking about as we go from this, kind of to dig more deeply into all of this, is, this may be an obvious statement tonight, but I keep going back to what the results policy actually says, and this one says a lot. It doesn't say, we need students to sit in a foreign language classroom or a world language classroom. There's so much to this results policy, which just gets this richness that I'm wondering about, and what else we can talk about, because there's so many pieces that all of you are already starting to elevate, and so that may be an interesting regrounding, I know that I'm taking, of what does our policy actually say? And I feel like with a lot of the indicators to write the work that we're all learning together, they've kind of honed in on like one mini-part of a results policy, do you know what I'm saying? So I just, I think there's some interesting things there. Any further discussion about this results policy, again, presented as is, knowing the context with which we're gonna dig more deeply?
Thank you.
Okay, so then, again, we'll just shift out for a moment. So members of the board have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for results policy 2.2.2, world languages, and I'll accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented, so we can begin for a discussion. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Thank you. John, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. So the board can now do any further discussion, whether the monitoring report demonstrates reasonable progress, or at least as indicated, reasonable progress with exceptions as presented. Any further discussion amongst the board?
No, the discussion I want to have is in.
Right, is in our next, okay. So, with other, with no further discussion needed, there is a motion and a second on the table to approve the report as presented. All those in favor of approving R.2.2.2 as presented signify with a I. I?
I.
Any opposed? The report has been approved. Thank you. For the time and presentation. So, going back to superintendent's report, just to start to leave this, kind of then, we've, we've prefaced this richly to sort out this further discussion about results policies.
So Anna will join me again. As a reminder, this is kind of part two of a conversation we began back March 18th, when it was 97 degrees outside, just talking about reviewing our results policies indicators. At that time, we really leaned into STAR and some of the academic results policy pieces. Today, we're gonna do two, two different things. The first is follow up on some proposals, or not really proposals, but draft ideas, potential indicators that we have created based on the feedback we got from you in March, really looking similar to human growth and development. Are we on the right track, right? Did we take that feedback and are these potential indicators moving us on the right track? Do we get a bit closer at some of these results we're talking about? So we'll, we'll do that portion and pause for discussion, and then we'll move on to some of the other indicators, like course enrollment and behavior data that we did present in March, but are students going to be initial feedback on? So that's kind of how we're looking to, to structure this, this time together. And I appreciate all the robust feedback that, that we know and all the thoughts that we have about what this can look like. So, as again, as a reminder, we talked about STAR, risk and proficiency levels, as well as benefits of STAR versus forward back in March. And today, we'll lean into those options, discipline referrals and the enrollment, as well as follow back up on what was initially presented. So this first part is our follow up from March. So you all have a document here that is a draft of some possible indicators reviewing math, language arts, social studies, and science, based on the feedback that you all gave in March. The way that it's organized is that you'll see the current indicator is in blue, currently as it stands. Then you'll see a line that just explains the rationale for any shifts that we were potentially suggesting based on that feedback, and then some ideas for potential indicators. Where possible, we gave you some benchmark data, because we've heard that the word increase can be problematic and trying to determine was statistically significant, et cetera. So where possible, we gave you historical VASD data, as well as comparisons across Dane County and peer districts across the state, similar size demographics, et cetera, as well as, so that we can also begin thinking about some of the different benchmarks. As Meredith, just standing. World language, if we're following you, we low 80%, but I have some question about that being a benchmark. And so, giving ourselves a bit of, some comparables here to begin thinking about benchmarks. One piece of note, our district's data, like our STAR data that we control internally, we could give you 23, 24 data. Our state testing results, such as forward ACT, pre-ACT, that data has not yet been released. So that's where you have 23, 23 data, and you will have 23, 24 data to share and move in that direction for the set goals based on that and that fall. So, this is a long night, and we need documents that you all have access to, so we won't go through every single indicator here. I'll just highlight some of the specific shifts that you'll note within how we build those potential indicators. So, one shift was from STAR to forward. We recognize, as we talked about in March, STAR is really meant to inform some specific instructional moves for teachers in the classroom. And the way that it predicts proficiency is to predict proficiency on the forward exam, which led us to a conversation about, well, for our purposes of results, why don't we just look at the forward exam, which is, which is aligned to our Wisconsin State standards? So anything that was STAR, we tried to shift to forward. Obviously, some limitations with that, there's not a Spanish assessment of the forward exam. So when we looked at STAR Spanish, we needed to keep STAR Spanish. Similarly, two bullets down, but the board felt strongly about growth and making sure that where students weren't necessarily proficient, that we were seeing those students make typical or high growth towards proficiency. The forward exam does not give us growth data, other than looking at one year to the next, and it's only once a year. So we could continue to use STAR for some growth data as well. Other shifts that you would notice highlighted, we worked to prepare ourselves. We don't yet know, there will be an early literacy screener required as part of Act 20. There's been a delay in identifying and naming exactly what that screener is. So for right now, we collect our, our metrics as STAR early literacy, but did make adjustments to some of the grade levels, knowing what we'll need to do with that screener when that comes, so we can easily substitute assessments within those indicators. Other shifts that we highlighted here, the indicators were written when we were using Aspire at the high school level. So that data was written for students in grades nine through 11. They actually take two different tests, ninth and 10th take pre-ACT, 11th takes ACT. So for those indicators, we separated out and gave a goal for pre-ACT for nine, 10, and a goal for ACT at 11. And then finally, social studies was an area that we had been in building, a capacity building, based on our curriculum renewal and adoption process. Now that we've adopted a curricular resource, as part of that process, the board had asked what metrics might we look at to see how well that resource is being implemented and what is the effect on our students? And so we did go ahead and put some potential indicators using the forward exam for social studies that we could begin monitoring and looking at some student data as a result. So shifting away from that. So high level, these are really the shifts that we use and then much of the rationale that you see within that larger draft document. And just as I know, we're trying to place benchmarks where possible, so that we're not, you know, looking at a hundredth of a tenth and saying, is that an increase? And what matters there, but kind of really give ourselves some clear benchmarks with that. So, before we go on to some of the other pieces, like course enrollment and behavior data, just wanted to pause here and see, based on some of this draft thinking, what's, what are your thoughts? Does this, how does this align with the feedback that was given? Are we moving in the right direction? Will some of these shifts put us in a better place to get at the actual results that will tell you how well we're progressing in specific areas?
I can start us off. I, I really like benchmarking. So I'm a big fan of that, we're moving in that direction. I still have some concerns that the focus group data is still aimed at increases. I, I think it's an improvement that it's aimed at statistically significant increases, but that I, I do still worry, and my concern all along with this, is that it sets the district up for failure and makes it look like it's, we're not being successful, when maybe we are, because the data doesn't always tell the right story. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that we, we don't want to lose track of those focus groups and what that data is. So, so I'm not sitting here with a perfect solution, but I do still have a concern about kind of defining success here as year-over-year success, or year-over-year increases, because I don't know that that's realistic, we're gonna achieve that.
Thanks, Jeremy.
So a couple of things, follow up on that. I agree, Joe, I like that benchmarking is having a baseline. I'm really interested in finding as many examples of this growth, like adjusted growth indicators that I can, because I really like to see, like, what are we doing that's contributing to the process of students' learning? How are we adding to that? So I really like growth. Toward, to that end, I see the definite need for increases to be the focus when we're talking about focus groups, where there may be an achievement gap or something. I would be similarly interested in looking at benchmarking against, like, okay, so if there's a more national average for the achievement gap that exists, can we start by beating that? Because historically, the Madison area has been fairly bad at even doing that. And so, so I can see it both ways there, but I think you can get at seeing the, the closing of those gaps by doing either one, which is really what's important to me.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, you're saying, John, look at, instead of setting an increased metric, but talk more about shrinking the gap.
I mean, I would be, that would be my initial, like, knee jerk thing. That would be something that I would want to run through our equity framework thoroughly by someone smarter than me. So, yeah, with that idea.
Any others?
What I, what I like is it seems like our focus groups were headed more and more toward cohort type data, where we're really telling the student's story from beginning to end. And while we do that, I don't know how we collect this information, where we look more, instead of looking at the achievement gap, we look at the opportunity gaps of our students to see what's going on before they even, what barriers they're facing before they step through that door. And I don't know how we collect that information and, and within a focus group, other than we're looking at qualitative data, and in this instance, to really get at that student's story. But I see us, it seems like we're headed differently. And I'm loving the direction that we're heading from even last year to this year, with the information that's being presented within the focus group. Even the number, when you look at the number of, of students in the focus groups, it seems like we're getting closer and closer to cohorts.
Yeah, I think one, one piece where we struggled with some cohort data is, is making sure that we are being inclusive of students who are moving in and out of our district. One piece that forward, we're shifting to forward does control for is STAR. We give STAR to whoever shows up that day, and that's who we give STAR to, whereas forward captures data for students who've been enrolling in our, our district for a year. So at least it's controlling, and we can start to think about what our own impact was versus a student who arrived yesterday and we give them the STAR today, and it's really not telling us what has been the impact of VASD. So that, that one year increment with forward helps us to control for a little bit of what you're beginning to push us into, Corby, with, with some of the cohort data, but isn't too rigid that, you know, if a student hasn't been here since second grade and they're in 10th grade, that their data's lost and not representative here in our success.
And this might be off topic, one of the things I noticed going through these examples is the focus groups don't include, like, the free and reduced lunch group, which is something that's been included in all the presentation we just had. And that's something I come back to, because, like, I look at the achievement gaps there, at people who may be economically marginalized, and that's, you know, as big as any. And so I want to make sure that we're continuing to focus on that, because to Corby's point, you ask different questions about the opportunity gap. If one of the things in the way is, is economics. And so I want to make sure that we're acknowledging that, too.
I have another thought, and I apologize for kind of the stream of consciousness style of this, we just kind of keep having thoughts as they come up.
Welcome to the club.
That's, that's the point of discussion.
I appreciate the effort to create objective indicators, but I'm not sure that every indicator needs to be based on objective data. I think you can include data as evidence, but like, we could create an indicator that just says the district will work to close gaps in focus groups. And then you, you can present as evidence, whatever evidence you have that you think might support that, that's been accomplished. Again, I'm just, I'm just, stream of consciousness, there may be very good reasons not to do that. But I don't want to lose track of the data, because I like getting it, but what I don't like sometimes, like I said in the last discussion, is defining success on our results policy based on, you know, a, a piece of data that only tells part of the story or tells the story wrong.
So, as I'm looking at this, I think that's, I want to go back to the benchmark conversation, and maybe this is for the board, and Anna and Amy fill in where your thoughts are. I, I think benchmark's the right place to go, but then they raised some questions for me as we look at those. First, are we setting achievable or aspirational benchmarks? Second, are we saying, if it's achievable, are we saying, we're okay with this percentage not meeting the benchmark? Because that's, I struggle with that, too. I, I don't feel like that's something I feel good about, and I think that's inherent in benchmarking. I'm not saying it's the wrong way to go, I'm just saying, these are the things that I'm kind of grappling with, and I don't have answers for that. That's, that, I don't know how to get around that.
I think what you're speaking to is, is indicative of why it was so important to continue growth in this, because growth controls for that, because growth includes everyone. And, and that was the intentionality in all of these indicators in the beginning, was making sure that we're accounting for, you know, moving students towards proficiency, but not forgetting about the growth of students who have made tremendous progress, might not be at proficiency yet, as well as the students who are well on proficiency and the responsibility we have for supporting growth there, too. And as long as growth continues to be a metric that we're looking at as a part of this, I think it becomes a bold, independent conversation.
I think as long as we can, I, I think, I struggle still with having a benchmark called out without being clear on what we're putting out to the community as what we're, because it's going to be, it's going to be a dead point. So that's just maybe something I need to internalize for sure, but, but I appreciate, I appreciate highlighting that growth is still, you know, an element of that, because in truth, not everyone is going to hit proficiency on this test date, but they may demonstrate growth beyond our, you know, our wildest hopes, and that's critical. So I'm just gonna put that there, I don't know how, where I'd go with that. The other thing I think is more, there's an issue with how our policies are set up. And they're artificially, you know, separated, where we're asking for our students to have the ability to achieve their goals and move forward, and then we have all of these discrete areas. And I'm wondering, how do we, how do we remedy that? Because, I mean, I think that's a flaw in our structuring to move more into position. And I'm looking at that thinking, I, what would be more helpful to me personally, and I don't know how to tease this data out, is how many of our students, and I hope 100% of them, are engaged in career tech ed or phys ed or arts or language? I mean, that they're at least plugged in somewhere. And to me, that, that should be, every one of our students is plugged in somewhere. There may be some that are able to plug in in more than one place. That's great, but if we're looking at each one of these as discrete areas, there's going to be a constant competition between them that really isn't the story that we even want to know. I mean, quite honestly. John's gonna jump out of his chair.
This is not one jumping out of my chair. I, I think that we're on the right track. I, I like the idea of reevaluating what we're asking for as a board a little bit, because I, I do think that we may have been a little naive in how we set that up, having been one of the ones who helped setting it up, like, I think I'm pretty naive in that. But, but I think that we're on the right track, and like, you, you've got your benchmarks that are basically like your lie detectors, right? We need to see that so that we know you're not just telling us a story in cherry picket data. And then you've got your growth data that shows, like, what are we contributing to the process, how are students growing? But then you've also got, you know, these qualitative pieces that are filling out the story in real ways that reflect the leadership moves and the opportunities that we're providing, and speak to that opportunity gap more specifically. And I think bringing all of those things together, I'm, I'm sure we're getting to something that I'm absolutely going to love in like four or five slides. But, so I think we're getting there. I think that this is a good question of like, where the board needs to do some more work to think about what it's doing. But I really like the work that you guys are doing. I don't want to stop at benchmarks. I want to be able to, like, put it all together, so it's like, all right, we've got this benchmark, we've got some growth data that speaks to this thing, and then we've got some qualitative data that flushes it all out. And if the board is asking a more generalized question, so that you don't have 30 discrete things to show us, maybe then it becomes more reasonable to say, here's the data set, here's a story, here's a way that we can combine different datas and show who's meeting which things and how across them. So, yeah, I like, I like where this whole conversation's going.
The only thing I was gonna say is that I really do love Corby's point on tracking cohorts. I don't know how realistic it is to do that, how hard or easy it is, but I mean, I think that's really the only way you really see change. And my question is, if we can do that, that would be amazing, in my opinion, to track it. And then B, I don't know how many years qualify someone to be in a cohort that should be tracked, right? So how long do you need, is it three years, four years, before that's a long enough time to give VASD enough time to do its magic? Is it five years, what's that minimum? But it would be amazing if we follow cohort data and we come with some kind of minimum number of years had to have been here in the system to then serve as a data point to tell part of the story. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and one, one important thing to note for the board is that actually, by moving to Wisconsin Forward, I mean, it's the most perfectly, the perfect measure that exists, and it does that for us, because the only students who are included in Forward are students who have been at us for a full academic year. And so that will be one improvement we can see. It won't be full cohort, but we'll control for that in some regard, when representing that, to be looking at students that we...
to be looking at students that we impacted over the course of a year to be included in that data set.
So to speak to that cohort thing, like, I know we've always talked about wanting cohort data, and obviously that takes time to accumulate. And obviously, there's always going to be people coming in and out. But over the years of collecting it, you're going to start to get an average for our variability of like, how it shifts with people moving in and out. So you're going to be able to say like, okay, we can count on like 5%, you know, moving in and out or turning over, that's going to make this data a little monkey, and then we're going to look at the rest or something like that that you can control for. I think the problem is like, you know, we want to start on doing something like that? Because it's going to take, you know, five, 10 years before we can answer any of the questions that we're asking around cohort data.
I think that brings up, I think, an important thing. And it kind of goes back to something Joe said earlier. Is there data that we can have that almost sets the stage that isn't being evaluated? You know, what is the percentage of, you know, permeability in this, you know, group that we're measuring? You know, how many of the bands? So we, but maybe that would just be not necessarily data that we're judging, just stage setting data. And Joe, I liked what you had said about that. There's maybe stuff that we want to know that helps give additional context. But I'm probably the last person to come up with what that is. But I'm just trying to flesh that out a little bit, because I do think that is, we're not going to have the cohort data that we're looking for today. But maybe there's ways to kind of put some of that information into the data that we have.
Yeah, using data as evidence rather than directly as an indicator, that's awesome. I've felt personally several times seeing those red boxes, where I felt my hands are tied, that I have to say, nope, we're not achieving progress. When actually, what I, the real story, I think, is the opposite of that. And so somehow untie them.
That's an interesting, yeah, idea of having the indicators be a little bit more general, generic. Is that kind of what I'm hearing you say, Joe?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think I appreciate that, right? When we built this, it was very much, what's the current indicator, where can we shift it? As opposed to thinking about all the indicators in a blank slate of what are the actual things we're trying to measure? And let's be clear on what are those indicators that might get us closer to that or provide some room for the evidence that yours, that yours.
So if they switch to Forward data, is it reasonable to go back and say they have cohort data from Forward? That's going back years and years prior?
The system itself does not get granular to each individual student. I, we would have to do some digging to see if it's possible to even, to even do that. Particularly given the grade levels that you test at is not consistent every single year. You take some different tests in fourth grade and eighth grade than you would in third grade, fifth grade, or 10th grade, and so it becomes a little tricky in that regard of that criteria data set.
And also, I think you've had a bunch of different standardized tests. I mean, it's been kind of a patchwork over the past, you know, six, 10 years.
Yeah, buckle up, because they're re-norming Forward going into next year, and they change the testing window moving forward, so it doesn't overlap with when the spring screener is tracked on.
And we don't even know what the screener is yet.
We got to move it on.
We've asked new information of admin that we hadn't asked before. So again, this has been a huge, it's your part to bring us this type of data presented this way that we hadn't had in the past. So again, I just wanted to take a moment to say we've had a lot of progress. And maybe pulling back data is possible for some things, but it certainly wouldn't be to the degree that you've put in place. So thank you for doing that, because that's huge.
Yeah, but thank you for all of that really helpful feedback around benchmarking. And I've got lots of those focus groups, making sure that socioeconomic stats go back in there. We can certainly go back to the table about cohort data and opportunities for some further flexibility. But with that, we'll continue on to course enrollment, which is a conversation we've had multiple times tonight. And so this is an area where we're really, we've had the conversation about course enrollment and the limitations that it poses, right? We do course enrollment data for all of those subject areas that are listed there and all of those different results policies. The strength, obviously, it's driven by student voice, and we appreciate that. It also aligns with some of the scheduling practices that are already highlighted in OE 11. OE 11 already tells us that student voice directs the schedule. So that is already accounted for there. It might not necessarily need to be accounted for again duly in these results policies. Obviously, the limitation, we understand that increases for every department will not be possible without large increases in enrollment or changes to the school schedule that would allow students to take more classes each day. Those also would likely be yearly bumps, and not something we can sustain unless we're looking at a 15 period day eventually. I don't know.
Eventually related to, eventually related to staff as well.
Oh, right.
And it was, it was staffing most heavily. So an idea that we brought forward, so this is just the interpretation from, this is actually the CTE results policy, where it talks about expecting all students prepared for college and career by accessing, he's not accessing as a keyword here, opportunities to explore different career interests and alignment to career pathways. And most of you go back to art, music, FIDE, any of those that are listed that we're really using course enrollment for. Many of the interpretations read similarly. What it is that we, it sounds like we're valuing is that students have access and can explore something that's specifically aligned to their career pathway. And it's not that we're trying to micromanage, whether that's music or art or FIDE. It's really about what's aligned to that student's career pathway. So one idea that we had to bring forward for your feedback today was just thinking about moving away from those course enrollment indicators. And instead, there's a Google form that students complete. So every student does it, and I know surveys don't always get the response right. But to fill out and complete the scheduling process of a high school, students select their courses and power school, they also complete a Google form. On that Google form, we could ask the question of students, their Donovan course enrollment process, to what extent did the course offerings align with your long-term post-secondary goals? Could be a way just to think about these career pathways? And are students seeing opportunities within the course guide that align with their goals for themselves? Maybe for one student, it is to take multiple years of oral language. Maybe for another student, their long-term goal is to take multiple years of different oral languages, because their priority is to explore. So doing something like this could lead us into a place of better understanding how students are seeing the results available to them and what they're thinking about for their long-term goals with that.
So a couple of questions about this, that I've just been kind of thinking as I, since I started looking at this. And these are just very much thinking aloud, and some of them might be problematic suggestions. But one of the things I wonder about is, well, first of all, so to your thought about asking a survey question. I mean, I would really want to see that as like some form of like scale, like Likert scale or something, so that it's not just yes or no. But more specifically to this, I wonder if it's beneficial to measure out how many students are taking like the second or the third in a sequence of coursework, like, you know, culinary two or culinary three, something like that, you know? To see the students that are tracking that way. And then I also wonder, you know, how you get at students that are dabbling in things in like a healthy way? And so you're looking for students that are taking an art class. And I wonder if it's not easier to do that by looking at the number of students that have one or two study halls in a given period, you know? Or, not that one study hall is a bad thing, or two study halls is a bad thing, or three study halls, maybe, maybe three's maybe getting up there. But like, just kind of seeing like how much empty space there is. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good question, because you're right. There can be pros and cons if you're looking at a student who's taking multiple years versus a student who is truly exploring, and we say we want them to explore. But I think that the work that the high school is doing in tightening up their systems for responsibility passes every lease period, it really help to help us to think about, if a student isn't here, we're confident that they're either working on a job site, doing an internship, or in another elective class to eliminate some of those possibilities. And you certainly could look at how many students have multiple academic resources. Typically, if they have multiple academic resources, it's because they're looking to leave campus for one of them, and we have to figure out, right? For tightening up those other systems, that may no longer be possible, and that may change the data in and of itself.
One of the questions, I think, if we're going to ask the, what extent did your course offerings align with long-term goals? Is there a way to ask, to what extent did the course offerings allow you to explore an area of interest? You know, a new area of interest? Because I think that's, we do want to make sure that this is the time for it.
And Amy, I've already mentioned staffing numbers one time. I'll do it again eventually. And maybe this is in line with, I think, some of Joe's comments around maybe benchmarking goals eventually hitting a wall. I think tightening up responsibility passes and doing what we can to incentivize students to stay on campus and take advantage of elective course offerings is the right word. Eventually, that will also hit a wall, where there's only so many hours in the day and only so many staff members that can teach a certain number of classes. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
And it's just, I'm doing my deep dive. So after career pathways is highlighted, there is technology literacy, information analysis, problem solving. Aren't those unique things to wonder? How we measure those? And I know that's like really lofty, but like, write the skills in some of this. That is interesting to me. Like, am I also, I took all these classes, but what skills do I tangibly leave this institution with that help elevate my pathway to where I'm headed? Like, that is so granular, but so exciting to me. So, yeah, right? It's not necessarily a Forward task, but it's just interesting ways of thinking about what we're talking about in terms of outcomes that we're really looking for for students that are even just beyond, you know, I don't know, the obvious or the measurable.
Yeah, I appreciate you lifting that up, trying to say also think about, right? With our strategic framework, we all have the journey of a lifelong learner, right? And we thought about academic career planning, and the journey of a lifelong learner is not a standardized test. It's a student thinking about their long-term goals and their specific skill sets and how they're growing across their time as a wildcat. And much of that could come back to what this looks like and all of those very discrete skills that are remaining with the major disciplines as well.
No, I was ruminating a little bit. I mean, on the one hand, like, this is a completely ridiculous exercise, because we're trying to measure, like, we're trying to say, okay, there are all these different pathways to success here. And we want to measure how successful we are in all of them. But then students are going to change which ways they want to go to be successful in their own ways in the process of doing that. And we acknowledge that that's a healthy and good thing. So you're like, you're not only moving the goalpost, you're moving like the whole field. And it's, and so one of my questions was in this process, like, how often do students consult with like counselor or somebody when they make their schedule? Or are they just making it very much like on their own? I know at this point, like, my sophomore and then rising junior doesn't, didn't consult me at all last year. Like, I have no idea until like I saw, I mean, I haven't even seen her grades, like, but I'm like trying to be a little bit more hands-off, so. You know, but I wonder if we're trying to measure these things, you kind of have to be able to get a sense of like, what direction is this person going in? And then are they feeling like they're gaining access to the things they need to gain access to to be successful in that direction? I don't even know.
Kind of to John's point, that's one reason why I kind of perked up when you said this, John. I kind of liked it. So my concern about enrollment has always been focusing on enrollment. Pits different elective courses against each other. But I kind of like the idea of, at least in some ways, seeing in data, if it's even possible to collect, of the percentage of students who are maximizing their enrollment courses, whatever that means. Because that shows, that to me shows a lot of things, that we're offering courses that are of interest to students and that, you know, that they're, we're incentivizing somehow taking advantage of those opportunities without putting more value on students who focus on one area and, you know, their whole career versus students who maybe do a little bit of everything. And another point, I mean, just to address your question about the survey, I think we have to accept that there's some data that we're interested in that there's no good way to measure except by asking the students. So I think surveying is a good way to do it. To me, my concern would be how we define success based on those survey results. Because if we define it as growth over year to year, then we're back in the same boat that we're in. But if we benchmark it, we say, we think that 65%, or if it's a five-point scale, we think a 4.6 is success, or whatever. And that number can always be moved as we get more data year to year. But that's so much more valuable to me than my growth, especially.
Can I ask a potentially hugely problematic question? Is there a way of looking at something that we would consider like a healthy or desirable mix in a schedule? Where like a student is taking a breadth or a direction of coursework in any, you know, if we've got, if we've got pathways carved out in each, you know, like, technical field, you know, sciences, math, English literature, languages, cultures, all that stuff. Can we say, okay, we've got students that are progressing up these ladders, but at the same time, they're mixing across ladders? What does that healthy progression and mix look like in a schedule? And is there a way to look at like, how many healthy schedules we have?
I think what you're perhaps getting at, right? Which kind of goes back to also how many students are maximizing their schedules. Because it's the last bullet here, which we brought up when we had the Act 95 discussion. If there are things we feel very strongly about the board, that's graduation and credit requirements. And so the shift for Act 60, right? Mandate that we're taking financial literacy, all students will be in financial literacy. That would be part of a healthy schedule, right, that you're naming, John. Other implications from Act 95. I think if we go back to the results policy data from world language, the actual interpretation says that the board expects, expects their district will prepare students to compete in the global economy by teaching them a second language. So if that's the expectation, what are the credit requirements? And what are the graduation requirements that we would also be setting forth to go with them? Or not, right? And I think that's, that's a really big question. But I think that's a little bit of what we're kind of getting at, and we've talked about in some other spaces as well. And so, not that that's solving this indicator conversation today, but just knowing that if there are levels of what that looks like, I think that's likely, there are specific things that we're asking all students to take or to do. I think that's likely what we're actually getting to that one, is that that larger conversation on what that looks like.
I think at one of your last presentations, you kind of talked about here you can toggle, like, some of the things that if you're doing, I'm going to come up with no words, no examples that were tangible to what you presented, they were all very, very helpful though in the presentation. Can we toggle that students who are involved in one of the extracurricular, or one of the career tech ed, or arts, or world languages, that relates to attendance being high? That relates to student, you know, school engagement? You know, I think when we start seeing those types of connections, and I don't think we have that, those tie-ins. I think, I think again, the way the board has it set up, everything is discreetly separate. And really, that's not how any of our students operate. And when we start seeing some of these toggling, what creates a healthy, what, students who are here all the time, what makes them show up? What is their school of like? Students who are here all the time and getting great grades? What is, what is driving that? And that's, I don't really have the insight to even start to come up with what that looks like. And I think as long as we're focusing on all of these separate instances, we're really missing the whole student overall. And that's where I come back to, I loved what we had talked about.
Which I think is the segue, right?
Yeah, we should stick to this. So this was what we, I think this is what you're referring to, right? The VASD mission metric. And we could set all of these different things, right? Attendance, proficiency on STAR, behavior expectations, social emotional analysis in student voice. We certainly could shift exactly what, when each of those indicators were that going to that. And so that could be another way that we look at this, this piece of enrollment, or many different indicators in general. Right? We could create an indicator that's really specific to academics. We could create an indicator that's really specific to social emotional learning. And then, yeah, so here you're asking us to think holistically about that. So I think that's an idea that's still on the table, and we weren't thinking about it in terms of this course enrollment question. But perhaps it's what we can come back to, John.
This was the slide I was talking, my favorite slide. I just like the idea of being able to combine data points to tell a more full story. I can see doing this in a lot of different ways. I'm not sure that the like circle graph does us any favors, but I really, really like where this is going so much.
With that, just to lift up kind of what you're saying, Joe, I like the idea, I mean, seriously thinking about how an indicator is written so it isn't then feeding into this compliant, not meeting reasonable progress, you know, like, it has to be graded, which exactly is the point of our, right, of our board, is to evaluate the progress of the district. But how do we allow the space to tell the story with then a stamp on it that makes sense? Because I feel like those are rubbing sometimes, you know?
I think part of the problem is, is like, when you look at our peer groups, when we're talking about something like in language arts here, meeting benchmarker on STAR, or on the language arts standard, like, I think this is the first one that's in the slides as well. like, I think this is the first one that's in the slides as well. And like, peer districts is 51%, Verona's 51%. I think part of the problem there is, like, 53% is like a lot of success, actually. Because you're talking about a lot of factors that go into it. And, you know, a little bit of students, but like, there's a lot that goes into that. Like, this is one of those things, like, you know, in baseball, the difference between, like, a 270 hitter and a 285 hitter is huge, right? Even though it doesn't look that much. Like, here, we've got to get really good at saying, like, okay, we've got this benchmark with what we determined to be our peer districts. And we maybe want to get over that a little bit. But like, 2% could be like world-beating, phenomenal, like, write a book about it, growth. And we just don't know that. And I think people outside of the world of education certainly don't know. They're like, you know, when you're looking at this, like, people love to throw these statistics around, like, 41% of students are not proficient at reading or something like that, whatever it is. But like, you know, the districts that are like model districts, like, maybe they're only at 43 or 45. They're not, it's not, you kind of have to know around where that is.
Which that's where the benchmark is, 5% above what our peer districts are achieving as opposed to, that's what I struggle with saying, oh, it's fine. 30% of our students don't meet expectations. I don't want to set that as a goal. I don't feel good about that, even though maybe the reality is, if we're exceeding what our incoming peers, I don't, I don't know.
It's better if you're like, you're getting one standard deviation above. You know what I mean? Because you've got to look at, like, all the districts, so you want to kind of say, they give it one standard deviation or two, or I don't know, something like that.
I think when it comes to where you set the benchmark, it needs to be attainable. Like, it can't just be aspirational in the sense of we want to communicate our values through the benchmark that we set. Because the reality is, we use these reports to evaluate the performance of the superintendent. So they have to be realistic numbers. And we're not, I mean, I don't think us setting a benchmark is saying that it's acceptable, that that's acceptable and we're done. We can always reevaluate and change what benchmark we set. But I think for it to be useful to do our job of evaluating superintendent, it needs to be realistic.
So, Joe, I have a couple of things about that. I agree that, like, the benchmarks have to be attainable because, for me, they represent the baseline that we're going to build off of. So they should be attainable. They should almost give people a sense of, like, this is the minimum, like, this is the normalcy that we're then trying to build off of and work out of. And I'm saying that for two reasons. One is, I'm more interested in what are the questions and the ways that we talk about things beyond the benchmark? But the other one is, is that we don't get to change the benchmarks. Because that's an admin indicator, like, you know, we're not, we're telling you what we think, but we're not telling you what to do. So, you know, I would expect that that benchmark is kind of like, okay, this is how they identified our peer groups, and this is where they're at. And we want that to be our starting point. We're going to get there, and then we're going to do these more qualitative, these more growth-based indicators to kind of build off of that until it gets to a point where admin's got to come back and say, well, our benchmark is 51, we're at 55, we've been at 55 for three years. It's time to find a new peer group, you know? And that sort of thing. But I agree 100% with what you're saying. I think that the benchmark, you know, it shouldn't be easily attainable, but it's got to be, like, relevant to who we are and where we're at. And it's got to serve as a springboard to move up and keep going.
And I also think we kind of built that in. I do struggle with setting it so necessarily, like, just attainable. I mean, we're not looking to... In the way that this is used to judge the performance of the district, we have it built into our monitoring reports that we can have. Achieving reasonable progress is a perfectly appropriate thing to be doing with exceptions or, you know, full compliance hasn't yet been met. That's okay. That's still, again, we're talking about capturing growth. And I find that I want to be somewhere in between the attainable and the aspirational. Because to me, achieving reasonable progress but not quite hitting it yet is where we should be at most points, if we are really pushing to...
Create change.
Yeah. So it sounds like the mission metric and having multiple metrics together will be something that'll be really important for us to continue to lean into. And I've had a few thoughts here just in terms of behavior data. As we talked, robust conversation around course enrollment. And then I think, or again, thinking of these buckets as discrete, course enrollment being one thing, behavior being something else. But naming that the board has said kind of loud and clear that looking at more holistic measures could be, could be helpful for him or helpful for us. But just wanting to add him a moment to sharing that in one of these human regards, how we're also thinking about behavior data, knowing that currently we call out some specific behaviors that are taken, but not necessarily more holistic pieces of that.
So, some further thoughts for your consideration and discussion as we look at our current ways of reporting kind of our progress in social-emotional learning and student behavior. We're currently looking at just the total number of office discipline referrals, increases and decreases in that, as well as perceptions of safety specifically based on law of office discipline referrals, core to physical aggression. One of the problematic features of that is when we look at things such as simple as enrollment that can skew data and paint an inaccurate picture of the health of our system. I'll use another example. When we look at, there are about 5,500 students in our district. There's a very different story when 5,500 students in our district have one law of office discipline referral over the course of a 180-day school year versus 55 students that have 100 each versus 10 students that have, you know, 500. Which is a very different story. And the way that we would respond to that would be really different. And when we think about student behavior, I think it's also important that we're grounding in the fact that we always meet students where they're at. And we have a responsibility to do what we can to teach students how to be, you know, in school, to be able to be successful and learn, as well as to respond when students present needs when things happen. Because students are going to make mistakes. We make mistakes as adults, and thankfully, they're able to do that in our cares. But by the time they leave our system, they have learned what they need to know so that those mistakes are not big ones after they, after they leave us. So some things to consider, and this is in alignment with, I guess, two national models. One, the RTI that became MTSS, that became MLSS model of that triangle that the National Positive Behavior Intervention Support Organization has long adopted decades ago around, in a healthy system, when you look at proportionality, in a healthy system, 80% of our students are going to be demonstrating success based on the instruction or getting that proactive instruction. Knowing that there are always going to be students that need a little bit more. And so, two considerations here. One would be looking at the health of our social-emotional supports and behavior systems in our district based on making sure we met the benchmark. But 80% of our students have a 0-1 office discipline referral. Conversely, when we're looking at perceptions of safety, what I hypothesize and argue that that is more than just physical aggression. There are many things that could happen that will make somebody not feel safe. And often, those are around repeated incidences of the same thing. Or a student who we have not yet found a way to meet their needs where they're at, whether there's a general education student, a special education student. And one way to look at that would be the percentage of our students, and this is also in alignment with MLSS language. This is in alignment with the National PBS model of looking at the percentage of students that have six or more office discipline referrals over the course of a semester or a given year. And using that as another way, we could look at the health of our system, particularly looking at how we have responded to those needs, known behaviors, all this communication to support that student. That is something, as we jumped ahead a little bit, that would absolutely be something we're looking at in BSD mission metric, knowing that student wellness and the ability to be in class and be in school is absolutely going to be a factor affecting how you can engage in class and take in learning. If you're not in class, you cannot learn academics in class. And learning how to be and how to regulate, we think about, you know, all of us, you know, at this meeting, some of us are sitting here, and we have learned how to be at a meeting. Somebody taught us this, and we're applying that right now. Others have learned just how to manage themselves. Not about learning how to be at a meeting, it's just, I'm really antsy right now, and I'm hungry, and I'm thinking about this thing later. And we're just learning how to regulate in time. Those are two very different knowledge sets that we have a responsibility to teach. And when we look at the percentage of students with some of these kind of levels of office discipline referrals, it speaks more to how, one, proactively supporting our students and also reactively supporting them. And knowing that, again, it's going to affect attendance, it's going to affect our relationships with our families, it's going to affect trust, it's going to affect, you know, all of those things. There's this wonderful snowball again with that mission metric. Something like this can also support, and we've had some of these conversations, the D R S ratio. There are two ways when we're looking at student behavior that we can apply R S ratio. Both have the positives, both have their, both have their drawbacks. We'll make, you know, our recommendation for consideration, we wanted to prevent both. One, we can look at the total number of office discipline referrals for any given group of students related to the total number of office discipline referrals for all students. We are looking at total numbers. One of the problematic things there is hypothetically say there's 10 of a particular demographic of students in the district. One of those students has 50 office discipline referrals, and the other nine have zero. Looking at R S ratio that way can present a need for support that is more holistic, that may be inaccurate to actually, this is one student that we need to better serve. Another way to look at that, which would be the way we would propose, would be just looking at the total number of students with any office discipline referral compared to all of the students with an office discipline referral, which controls for the volume that can happen in some way. Now, knowing that at the school level and the district level, we're always going to look at both. But for reporting purposes, can paint some, sometimes a more accurate picture of, you know, how we're doing particularly in our cultural responsive practices, meeting students' linguistic needs, all of those things can better support the problem. So I mean, especially we would have looking at the disproportionality there. And then what I've added to this slide deck is just some language from the National PVS organization that speaks to the things that we need to be in place to be successfully meeting students' needs. This one is around core practices and the things that we have a responsibility to do to make sure that 80% or more of our students have 0-1 office discipline referral. And then also looking at the things that we would need to be doing for students that have six or more office discipline referrals, that for individualized support. What I appreciate about this language is the attention it puts on, not just the instruction we provide from all, but some of the individualized things we need to do to meet students' needs. The collaboration that needs to happen with staff, and most importantly, the collaboration that happens with a student and their family in doing these things, particularly making it to more intensive supports. You're going to hear me say this a lot. I think often people misconstrue when you look at tier-three supports and make them synonymous with special education. I'm going to say it early and often, that it's neutral to a student with an IP, to a student without an IP, we are responsible to serve both. The way that that looks might be a little bit different for a student with six or more office discipline referrals with an IP, we're going to be looking at their behavior intervention plan, a safety plan, we're going to be looking at a functional behavior assessment. That functional behavior assessment can also happen for a general education student in supporting them. And so, no, again, tier-three does not equal special education. Tier-three are just students that our proactive instruction has not yet quite met. So, just again, some advice for some possible different reasons we're looking at our behavior data moving forward and leading to creating all the best mission metrics.
So now we've had lots of discussion, and we really appreciated all the feedback. Are there any more questions or thoughts on some of the behavior pieces that Adam had added to it? Or do we feel like it really falls back into that mission metric? Can you give a minute for that? It's more of a question.
I have one question, Adam. I know I'm looking at this wrong, I know you can answer it. When, when you were showing the two scenarios when we're looking at the eight-year-old, and it said a given group, my mind, for whatever reason, went to DPI's restraint and seclusion. And knowing that black children are vastly affected and impacted by the restraint and seclusion provision, my mind went there when I saw a given group. And my way of looking at it that way, am I, where am I making that disconnect?
I think it's an important connection to make because, in the end, they can all be very connected. And I think that the part that's separate is that is one possible way of involving ourselves as adults with very particular circumstances that need to be met when a student is demonstrating a possibility of harm to others or harm to themselves, of the bar that needs to be met of when we would go hands-on. That could absolutely present itself here. One, you know, looking at something that has happened over and over and over again where a student is hurting themselves or hurting others, and the conversation that would need to happen about when we might use that. We also are having debriefing sessions any single time that happens because we know the trauma that that can create when we have to go hands-up. We never want to, but when we have to, to make it more likely, or sorry, to make it less likely that we would need to do it again because we're doing the things we needed to do to support the student where then that doesn't need to happen. And that's where the data can also support when we look at time of day, when we look at location, after times where we've had to do that, is the student more or less likely to have that happen again? Because if we're having situations where that's continuing to happen, we have to really be honest with ourselves about whether that, one, whether that response is leading to long-term improvement. We have to do it in the short term, but there's something we're doing that's not meeting that child's need that that continues to have to be the response. And so, it's connected but not connected in terms of that that is its own data set that we need to look at in aggregate, we would look at this aggregated. But it's more how those two things speak to each other and what we're learning from that. Because in the end, the goal is always moving students, and then we start to get the cohorts again over time. I will speak from my own personal experience, looking at this particular data set, students with six or more office discipline referrals over the course of, we took great pride as a school that that group of students was always changing, which showed the success that things were put into place. And so, getting more to a place where we're using our data in that way to inform those interventions. Thank you so much.
Adam, I've got one quick, I amazingly got a text from a little bird in Japan who wanted me to just get in the mix. And I think your potentially shortening the window on the cohort gets to some of this. But part of tracking cohorts that we need to be wary of is that some of our formerly marginalized students may be those same students that are hopping in and out of the cohort, and we lose track of actually measuring our growth with those students or our impact with those students. So I think just having that as a potential caution related to cohorts. And I sent a text back, and he goes, you're supposed to be...
Goodbye.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah.
Or whatever. Breakfast. What a time to eat.
It is, yes, breakfast.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's better, yeah.
First of all, wait, I've got something to jump with you. First of all, Dr. Claire, what are you doing? Get some breakfast. Oh, do something awesome. Come on, Adam. All right. So I was not made to, like, give a lot of praise. I'm usually quicker to critique things. But I got to say, I love where a lot of this stuff is going. I, I think that, Corbin, what you asked about speaks exactly to why you would recommend doing it one way versus another way with that data. I love that the way that you're talking about it focuses more on how often our students are doing it right and not necessarily needing support. And I want to reiterate that while this tier-one, tier-two, tier-three language, you know, was adopted probably by some consultant at the federal level somewhere from response to intervention in special education over to multiple levels of support or systems of support, MLSS, is, does it a great disservice? Like, even if they just called it level-one, level-two, level-three. It was not take a rocket scientist to figure this out. It would be much better because I think that there's a really useful way to look at data in the context of our, like, level-one, level-two, level-three systems of support and how often we're pursuing this. I know when I first came on the board, one of the things that really animated me was about how we think about bullying and incidents that arise for bullying. Because it seemed to me way back then, and this is a different administration, a different time period, it was a different world, like, before COVID, I really got upset about this. It's a really different time. But like, was that, you know, we tended to wait until there was some sort of physical aggression before people jumped us. So all the little things, the little looks, the snide remarks that happen in the hallway, the repetitive, you know, name-calling or putting down that happens that lead up to that moment of physical aggression aren't necessarily captured. Or if they are, it's... Or if they are, it's, you know, not in a systemic way that helps us really provide these sorts of supports. So introducing, you know, a level one, level two, level three way of looking at it and tracking data that aligns with that, you know, is really great, not just for the board, but like, it's a really great paradigm shift, you know, like, functionally in schools to be able to like, you know, help people to learn to be kind. Not all of us were born kind. I had to learn it, and it's hard. So, so yeah, I really, I just love where this is going. I love where this discussion is going. I love where you guys' heads are at with this. You know, Dr. Claire, you can chill out, go get some, some food and relax. Things are going well here. I might ask them all the questions that are going to bug you when the mic goes off later. All right.
Yeah, just to kind of wrap up, close, I appreciate that we just spent a large amount of time at this board table talking about results, which I know is things that we crave to do as board work, right? Of like, what is happening to students in our system? So I appreciate just the richness of the discussion, the energy of the board, and the direction of admin to try to do things differently, to set lofty goals, to not be tied to, you know, typical ways of measuring. And I do certainly want to just lift up the fact that there are external factors with which people dialogue about our district. So I appreciate that we are still attuned to forward data and things that the external does use. And I think we need to keep that reality at this table as well, that we talk about those numbers that are being talked about elsewhere. And just one final logistic, I guess, to leave as we keep brainstorming, if there would be helpful ways of redoing our results calendar. I know we've talked about that, right? With the timeliness of the data then that's being used within the results monitoring, please keep that in dialogue as well. If we can, you know, readjust and reflect the calendar to make the most sense for when the data becomes available for you all. I think that's just an important piece to make the cycle just make sense.
So is it fair to say that the board as a whole feels like we're continuing to head on the right track? I think we're committed to continuing this dialogue, whether it's in a board meeting, eventual retreat, wherever that may be. Eventually, I think we'll get to the point that our team will start to feel like the time is now that we're going to start to recommend to the board some new indicators related to a result policy. You have to vote on them to be reasonable. But our goal is to make them the most reasonable possible by the time they end up to you guys for a couple of reviews and an eventual vote. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, you mean, Adam, for all of your time. I think that closes the superintendent's report officially. And just moving through our agenda, we did cover then both board action items. So thank you again for toggling back and forth. Agenda item, board updates, just some general updates. And to your point, Chad, I think there seem to be these ongoing moments in our board meetings and onward where we just, we need a workshop for that. We need a workshop for that. And I think there's this general sentiment that, that we may need a frequency to that degree. And so I have an email drafted to send to all of you just to gauge when is best as just a general standing, right? Do Saturday mornings feel great? But I want to use a Monday when we don't have a board meeting. Like, where do you feel that time could come from? And then really elevating that I think that would be nice to try to get something calendared. Yeah, I won't say before the school year, because that could be unrealistic, but really close to the start of the school year. Because I think there have been a few lingering topics that it would just be nice to get that deep entrenched time to have conversation and dialogue. So just know that that is coming, to just pick your brains about the time.
I would like to try to schedule it while Dr. Claire is still in Japan.
Perfect. Let's table that for it.
Chad, check your texts.
Yeah. Any other general board updates that anyone has?
Juneteenth Wednesday.
Yes.
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 If you're out and about, the Center for Black Excellence doing its groundbreaking ceremony at noon. Mr. Founder of Life Church, right off Bajeroom, Hurst Street, it's outside.
Yeah.
It's outside, you can see it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Pretty monumental moment.
Thank you. Awesome. Anything else? Okay, moving on to public comment. I don't see anyone. Okay. Moving on, superintendent consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look over the superintendent consent agenda? Any questions? Hearing no questions, that has been approved, board consent agenda. No one has had a chance to look over the board consent agenda.
One minor. And on the special meeting, the list of attendees.
Yes.
I wasn't going to call you.
I was like, I was there. I appreciate my presence.
Thank you. So in the special attendance or special board meeting minutes, that those in attendance, Corby was not there. Did I reiterate that correctly? I see Lori moving back there. Okay. Okay. Good question. Meredith, is this devoted that change officially?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So given that addendum adjustment, and I'll let the math person think it'll work. Right. I'll take a motion to approve the rewritten board meeting, board meeting minutes as suggested.
Sure.
John, second? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. All those in favor of approving the special meeting minutes as adjusted? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And we are done with board consent agenda, future agenda items, just the regular board meeting schedule. And again, just knowing that you'll be getting an email from me, so we can hopefully get a workshop on the calendar rather than always saying, we should do a workshop, we should do a workshop. Put some key to that. Thank you. You are welcome. Thank you all for being open to that idea. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Corby. All those in favor of adjourning this amazing June 17 meeting with Chad as our co-lead? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. I would like Dr. Claire to make her watch.
Yeah. And yes, the meeting is adjourned because majority said yes.
Mr. Williams. So, adjourned to parade that was with superintendent.
Lori, are we offline?